So we are here for a budget workshop.
Good afternoon, City Council. Today or tonight, we're going to talk about the general government, kind of, which includes not only your budget, but most of the budgets at City Hall. Those begin on page 38. So you will see the City Council, the Mayor, the City Administrator's Budget. All three of those divisions combined make up what's known as the Legislative and Executive Divisions. We have an overall increase there of $8,444 or 2%. There is a new program and service request for $3,000 to reinstate employee recognition or appreciation event to some degree. Looking down through there, the overall personal services increased by about $5,400. Contractual services increased by $2,800, which includes increases in the City Council to fund newly elected officials' training and strategic planning and orientation and outgoing recognition. As well as the Administrator's Budget, the contractual services increased in travel by about $620 for the MMA and the Town and City Administrators Convention or Conference that they hold, as well as miscellaneous service for $200 for new employee orientation. Given the turnover that we've experienced recently, we are having quarterly new employee, kind of a meet and greet, so that includes funds for that, as well as training for about $500 based upon usage. Supplies increased by $260, and that is attributed to the several small fluctuations amongst the three divisions, and the fixed charges are flat. The City Attorney, we've already covered the TIF budget, so the City Attorney budget is on page 41. We have an overall increase here of $38,400 or 45.2%. We have been making significant strides in the ADK claims with both Code and FIRE. Unfortunately, that is very attorney labor intensive to do that, so we have been carrying forward legal fees for the past couple of years. We are completely out of those funds, so now we are in need of increasing that budget. One of the things that the City Administrator and I were talking about is we have some acquisition demolition funds that, since we aren't demolishing those buildings anymore, maybe we can target some of that money for this purpose to kind of keep it off the general fund and the tax rate. The City Clerk and the Election Budget is the next group of divisions on page 42. As a note, and I believe the City Clerk put at your place setting the further justification for their new program and service requests to refill a position that was eliminated for a total of $48,000. The overall increase for the combined City Clerk election budget rose by $42,890 or 13.9%.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the $48,000, that's for the new position?
Yes.
Is that salary and benefits, or that's salary alone?
That's salary and benefits.
And I will just point out that there's still some discussions ongoing about where that, if that position is funded, where it should be slotted at. And we're also, this is also tied into some extent with the rental registration program. And Kathy, Dave Pettiger, I, and Peter Parker are going to be meeting to talk about what can be handled through our automated system and how that might all work. So when we come back to the additional personnel requests, we may have something more specific to report in those regards.
And it's a full-time position?
Yes.
And it's not currently in the budget?
That's correct.
But the actual base budget?
Right, not in the base budget, but what Heather was pointing out was that in our election budget, we always budget to hire a temporary person to come in in the month of, or in the fall season to help us with election prep. That position would be balanced out.
So some of that money would never really apply?
Exactly, would apply to it, exactly, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mark.
Well, that's what I was going to mention, and it'd be nice to know how much now would be relieved from the budget with the new position.
And that will be part of that position spreadsheet that is coming before you, once all the department presentations are done.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I had the same questions about how we might be able to afford this because of knowing the clerks' offices, I do, I think it's, it is understaffed. A lot of places are, but I think losing two of those positions and restoring one of them, I think makes a heck of a lot of sense. And I want to, would like that on our list or whatever, you know, I think you guys are going to do it anyway.
Yeah, we're going to come back with all of the personnel requests. I think we need to spend some time going through all of them to try to decide how we want to proceed.
Great.
Thank you.
So the City Clerk budget, which is at the top of page 42, the administrative portion had an overall increase of $11,863 or 4.6%. Of that amount, $9,658 represents increases in personal services based upon contract settlements and so forth that are in place, like we've seen in the other departments. Contractual services increased by $1,815. The lion's share of that is in miscellaneous services. That rose by $1,250. Again, this is the off-year or the on-year, as the case may be, for the inauguration ceremony, as well as increases in postage and travel of $700 to attend the New England Conference that's being held in Maine this year. We have an increase of $300 in supplies, for printing supplies, that's offset by a small reduction in other supplies. And then fixed charges rose by $90 for a cost of a notary renewal. The election portion of the budget had an overall increase of $31,000 or 64.8%. Again, this is the year, the on-again, off-again, this is the year where we have two elections scheduled in one fiscal year, both the state election in June, as well as the local election in November. We have personal services increased by $20,000 for both temp workers and overtime. Contractual services increased by $9,500. The biggest impact there was on printing of $6,500 for the city ballots. We have $900 increase.
You said the June election and the November election are covered by this? When, oh, never mind, the May budget referendum, where does that fall in?
It's the fiscal year, Alicia, so this budget is actually representing November 2019 and June 2020.
But not May 2020?
Not May, because we bill the school directly for that. They pay for it directly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, advertising increased by $900. And then miscellaneous services increased by $1,350. That includes programming for the voting machines, as well as the memory sticks for absentee ballot processing, excuse me. And then PW vehicle rental. We had supplies that rose by just under $1,200. That includes increases in printing supplies labels for the barcodes. And then the increase in fixed charges rose by $275 for the rental of the locations for the second election. The Finance Department starts on page 43 and continues to page 44. We have a new request this year for a program and service to reinstate one of the seven positions that were eliminated. One of the positions that we're looking at doing is going to be partially funded by the three utility accounts. Our exposure with the meter management system and the changing out of the meters and just the whole utility billing program, we are down to essentially two people that are running the utility billing program from the city. And right now, that has just become too skinny with some of the endeavors that the utilities are looking at on taking on. The Finance Administration component had an overall increase of $6,700 or 4.8%. Pretty much all of that is in personal services. Contractual was flat. Supplies had an $84 increase in printing, and fixed charges are flat. Purchasing had an overall increase of $2,885 or 3.1%. Of that amount, $2,500 represents the increase in personal services. We also had a small increase in supplies for printing, and then an increase of $200 in fixed charges for, we're looking at belonging to a vehicle bid procurement. We were able to get some of our FIRE bid information and so forth from this bid membership. We tried it this year and found it very useful, so we are actually budgeting for it next year to continue that process. Accounting and auditing increased by $4,500 or 2.2%. Of that amount, $3,500 or so, it represents an increase in personal services. The balance represents about a $900 increase in contractual services, which includes training and Munis and other municipal sessions, given the number of new employees. I'm not sure how many of the councils are aware of this, but out of 23 positions in the Finance Department, we have had 11 turnover since July 1st, and we are now on our fourth payroll clerk, so training particularly in that division is becoming a mandatory necessity at this point. We also were able to offset the additional training monies by decreases in printing of $370 based upon the current inventory, and we have a small increase of $72 in supplies. The Treasury function had an overall decrease there of $3,930 or 1.3%. Personal services in this case, again, it goes back to the attrition I just mentioned, had a decrease of $1,400. We also had a decrease of contractual service of $2,223. The lion's share of that is in the printing due to the current forms that we have on supplies. We are good, clear through the next fiscal year, as well as a reduction in what we are hoping will be the net lien recording and discharge account. We anticipated a reduction of about $1,900 there based upon current activity. And in this particular department, we have a decrease of $300 in printing supplies. The last division that kind of falls in this financial suite is in Central Services. We have an overall decrease there of $485 or about 48%. That's all in the postage and repairs to equipment based upon usage, so there's not a lot of fluctuation other than that.
Councilor Lyson.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention how much I enjoy paying my taxes, actually, when I come, you know, I don't, the money, but the second floor on both sides of the hall, I think, are responsive to people as they come. And, you know, people stop their work, they come to the window, and then they go back to their work. Sometimes there's three people at the window on the one side, and the clerk's office is the same. So I just, coming here as a, you know, customer service, I think, even with the cuts that we've had, I think we've made the best of it, and I think part of that is, you know, like I said, nobody likes to pay taxes, but when they have a better experience when doing it, it certainly helps. And it's helped that people know what they're doing, and they're efficient and effective at what they're doing, so I commend both sides of the sector.
Thank you. Moving on to the, I'm sorry.
I had a question on Central Services, the second line, repairs to equipment is represented as a negative number?
Yes, that's kind of the charge-out account that, where we charge for printing to all of the other departments that make copies on that photocopier.
Okay, so it's sort of a revenue stream queue?
Correct. The MIS budget is found on page 45. You do have a new program and service request for new tablets of $6,800 for the building maintenance staff, and tablets and software for code enforcement as well. We have an overall increase in the MIS budget of $49,600 or a 10.3%. Positions in this budget actually decreased by $10,000 due to attrition and a $1,200 reduction in overtime. That was more than offset by the increase in contractual services of $59,746. Pretty much all of that is in maintenance and licensing. We have a lot of maintenance and licensing agreements, as you can imagine, that are housed within our MIS budget. Clearly, the, probably the lion's share of the increase represents a maintenance agreement on our security camera system. We did not have one in place now. They are looking at doing that to make sure they are fully integrated, that the repairs are timely addressed and so forth. That had a price tag of $23,635 of that $59,000 or so increase. Civic Plus, which is the city's website, had an increase of just under $11,000. That's primarily due to the volume of text alerts that sent out to people as we need to buy in groups of, I think it's $1,000 or $1,000 texts, our email addressers, and with that, it becomes very costly to do that.
More and more people are signing up for text alerts.
Which is a good problem to have, but it is definitely impacting this account as well. Munis, which is the city's fund accounting, payroll, purchasing work orders and so forth system, had an increase of $7,500 in their software maintenance and licensing. This software is shared with the school department because they are also on the system as well. We have increase in phone support of $8,100 in antivirus software for about $4,700. And then we have a small increase in the telephone line item of $500 due to a data plan for one of the tablets. We are, with more and more departments requesting tablets, MIS wants to get one in their shop to kind of test it and vet it and so forth, so that covers that line for them. Assessing, which falls on page 46, has an overall increase there of $15,667 or 5.6% of which $14,000 represents an increase in personal services. We have a $1,300 increase in contractual services. Primarily, that is made up of $900 in the professional development or training account for the IAAO courses needed by our chief assessor. As you recall, not too long ago, he was given an award for his latest licensing require, or that he had received. We also have a new appraiser that is going through the process now of just beginning to take these courses. The IRS per diem has increased for mileage, so mileage did increase by $200, and we're seeing some of these positions just on the road more. And we have a small increase in supplies of $140, both in printing and department apparel for that. Human Resources, which is found on page 47, I'm happy to say this is the third full year that it's been back under the city's umbrella. I think overall, the move has been good. We are seeing and hearing positive things from the departments. Just having just a little bit more time would help to kind of do what we have planned strategically, but we're slowly phasing in some of those items. So we have an overall increase here of $3,600 or 2.9%, of which $2,900 represents personal services. We have a $767 increase in contractual services. We have increases in labor relations of $1,100 and medical service needs of $2,000. Excuse me, and miscellaneous services of $264 due to additional copying charges based upon the turnover in employee onboarding. We are making a lot of copies that we had not anticipated.
Councilor Lyson.
Yeah, I had a question, not a question, but just one position here is also staffed through CDBG, right?
No.
It's not?
No, both of those are city positions.
So there are, so how many staff are we talking about?
In HR, there's two full-time positions.
So, and the CDBG, what does that do for human services, anything?
Oh, you're thinking of social services, which will be discussed next Tuesday.
Okay, great, so I'm just confused.
Yes. So we have reduced the advertising budget in Human Resources by $2,700. That was a placeholder for certain advertising of positions that we will look at carrying forward to if the need should arise.
So my confusion was, it used to be called personnel, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, correct. Code Enforcement is the last budget that we'll be talking about tonight, and that falls on page 58. So before we kind of dive into the details, there were two new program and service requests made. One for scanning the aerial photography into GIS that had a value of $13,000, and the other was to supply three staff vehicles for inspectors' use at a value of about $61,000. I will also note a couple other items as part of the base budget in the current budget. A new planning position has been included in that base budget. It will be on that list that we go through when we reevaluate all of the, not only the two that are in the budget now, but also the requests that were made to go forward. The last element that I want to kind of highlight, and it was mentioned as part of the CDBG budget, both of the positions that are funded by CDBG, one is in code enforcement, which is the code enforcement inspector, the other one to Councilor License Point is in social services. Both of those have reached their sunset of the five-year limit, so for our 2021 budget, those will be coming back on to the general fund. Code enforcement had an overall increase of $70,300 or 14.7%, of which $64,000 of that was included in personal services, and that includes the new position, about $65,000 in regular wages for the new position. And then you have a small increase in overtime.
And that's wages and benefits?
In the $65,000, and this is just wages.
Okay, thank you.
Contractual services increased by $3,200. We have increases in printing of about $1,200. In the current year, the City Council had approved to do stuffer inserts for the utility bills to kind of talk about city trash and beautification and so forth. The department is now budgeting for one of those mailings for next year as well, so that will be included in the budget. We have an increase of $460 in the telephone account. That includes not only the new cell phone stipend, but the telephone line for the new position. We have travel and training increase of about $1,500. That includes not only training for the new position, but also the IRS mileage impact that we saw in assessing as well. And then we'll see smaller increases in postage and miscellaneous services, about 200 bucks apiece, with the elimination of subscription offsetting those totals.
Councilor Lyson.
Okay, name change on this one. This is, you keep talking about code enforcement, which it should be code enforcement and planning, in my opinion.
Okay.
Right? But you're calling it protective inspection. What's that about?
That is a kind of holdover from past nomenclature. Right now, it is in our department, or in our system as code enforcement, but it's in the budget as protection, protective inspection, so it just kind of...
So I think that might confuse people if they're looking where's planning and code and not be able to find it, and I'd like to see, you know, the division as planning and code enforcement, code enforcement and planning, or planning and code enforcement, so.
So we have about a $930 increase in supplies, and again, those, that represents general increases attributed to the new position, as well as a $430 increase in small tools for a thermometer and a new camera for the department. Fixed charges rose by about $1,100 relating to plumbing inspection fees. That is essentially past due revenues based upon what we collect for plumbing fees, get passed on to the state, so that's the account that this...
No, we do the work and the state gets some of the money.
And then we also had an increase in dues of about $800 based upon potential memberships of the American Planner Association and the main association for planners for the new position as well.
Councilor Ray.
When you're saying new position as part of protective inspection, you mean the city planner position that was carried over?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That is still up for discussion during the new projects?
That's correct.
Programs, okay.
Yep.
So at some point, like you said, Ed, we'll have a conversation just about the positions that are being...
Yes, that's my thinking, is given the number of positions that have been requested, plus the fact that some are in the budget and some aren't, we should probably look at all of them so that you get a chance to prioritize what you feel is most important, if any.
And Madam Mayor, if I could, unless there's other questions on what we've covered tonight, I will remind the City Council, this Thursday, there is no council workshop.
That's in return for coming at 5:30 tonight, so.
A week from tonight, we will pretty much be covering the last of the department focuses, so we will cover municipal revenue, social services, to your point, Councilor Lyson, library, some debt, the intergovernmental, which will, in this case, includes the airport and the transit, will be discussed next Tuesday. Next Thursday, Councilor Ray, to your point, I would envision having that discussion and ready with the personal services list on next Thursday's docket. We do have the review of the nonprofit request and then the miscellaneous budget, but I think that is something, what I'll probably do, if it's okay with council, I'll pass out the list Tuesday night, so that way you have time to digest it for Thursday, if that works for everybody.
And again, if anyone has issues, items they'd like to have further discussion on, let us know so that we can start putting together agendas for the general discussion sessions.
So on the personnel list that you're going to be putting together, I'm just interested in what information people want on that list. So the position, obviously, I think it's important for us to think about whether, I mean, there were two positions, the FIRE...
And the planning.
The deputy chief and the planning position were on, we talked about including them this year and last year's budget.
Right, and they're already in the...
Discussion. And then, I mean, I think amounts for what each of those positions, what the impact would be.
So what I'm, what I'm planning to do, if this meets with your approval, is to do the base salary and then do the fringe benefits. When I'm quoting amounts and when you look at the new program and service list, just to keep some element of consistency amongst all, I am assuming base, single-plan health insurance coverage for all of them. Some may go family, so it may be more expensive, others may waive it completely, but they will all be calculated using that same method. And then using main state retirement or main purs for all positions. That way, you don't have the significant deviation... That way, you don't have the significant deviation from public service or public safety positions versus other, if they're all kind of factored using main PERS. And then any other miscellaneous elements that go along with those positions. Desks, dues, mileage, uniforms, cellphone stipends. All of that will be in a column by themselves.
Great. And then also, I guess if there are offsets, as Kathy was talking about the overtime.
Yep.
Counselor Ray?
Could we have the division number? I don't think we need an account number, but the division might lead us closer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Break it out by department or function. Public Works, please.
And even though we don't have a budget meeting on Thursday, we'll mention that there's a Lewiston Youth Advisory Council event at 7:00.
At Lewiston High School?
At Lewiston High School.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we have a little bit of extra time. Planning to talk about the, or update everybody on the Savannah Street Fire Station replacement at the, during a regular meeting under reports and updates. But as you'll recall, we recently got an updated cost estimate on the station. It came in higher than what we had anticipated. In particular, building construction costs increased in the most recent estimate by about $950,000 to a total of almost 4.1 million. I do want to point out that that included a 10% contingency at $332,000 and a 4% inflation factor built in between time of estimate and estimated time of construction of another $157,000.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So contingency are things that we didn't know we had to include the first time around, so...
No, it's the fudge factor based on how precise, you don't know how precise you can be, given the bidding environment and other factors that might influence this. It would also allow for some additions if we found we needed to have some change orders during the project.
Okay.
So anyways, there was some offset against that increase in reductions in other areas such as professional services, furniture fixtures and equipment for the new station, plus miscellaneous costs, bringing it down to about $778,000. Overall, when you factor everything in, total project costs are now at about $5,500,000. Did get some information on why the estimate went up so much. This estimate, the most recent estimate, was done by a professional construction management firm and went into much more detail than the architects had originally in terms of developing estimates by virtually every element of the building. And the factors they quoted were high labor costs due to a labor shortage and busy construction economy. Carpenter's in particular being in demand and framing prices increasing. And then they also point out that the nature of cost estimating is to be conservative. And, I mean, I think we can all understand that. You don't want to give somebody an estimate and have it come in massively over that, although that does happen sometimes. So the estimator feels like as they get closer to a final design product, they can probably review and refine the estimates that they've come up with. Based on the estimates we started with, we thought we were about $1.2 million short in funding for the project. With these new estimates, we're at about $2 million short. So there's a breakdown on the backside of that sheet that shows the cost estimate we were working on up through February versus the one we got in March. Identifies the changes in categories, almost all of which are obviously down at the bottom under the building and related elements, and then the totals at the bottom there. So that's where we are at the moment. That's where we are in terms of potential funding. I will point out, Counselor Joy did ask about what the cost differential would be between a two-bay and a three-bay station. The estimated reduction would be about $240,000 to $260,000, which quite honestly is not that significant in view of the size of this project, given that if we went back, you know, 10 years from now and had to add it, it would probably be significantly more expensive, over and above even the inflation factor, given all of the startup costs and bidding costs and all that kind of stuff you would have to go through. They have also provided an updated schedule for the project. And basically, they are looking at going to the Planning Board in June. As you'll recall, we need to go to the Planning Board to get conditional use permit for the site on North Temple Street. So that'll be a necessary permit that would have to come from the Planning Board. Looking at possibly bidding the project in August. And I do know that there is going to be another Building Committee meeting later this week. And I know the Building Advisory Committee is very interested in discussing alternatives and suggestions on what might be done to moderate the cost of the property. And there is also, a little later in the process, I think, a specific review session that's built in with the architects and some other folks to try to value engineer the building again, to try to see if we can find any cost savings. So that's kind of an update. I just want to let you know that it is proceeding, that the architects are proceeding along the lines of the design and plan for the building that was presented by the Building Advisory Committee a number of weeks ago. So that's where we are and where we're going.
Counselor License?
Yeah, a couple things. One is I support the three-bay, and that's what's being costed out.
Correct.
Okay. I think that it makes much more sense to do that now than later and get that designed and implementation. The other is that paragraph where you talked about the shortfall. That first sentence was a little confusing, but the way you said it, I understood.
Okay.
But...
Easiest way to follow it is on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, you might take a look at that.
Even though Heather doesn't like...
If it's going anywhere else in there.
She doesn't think they're pretty enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Mark?
I know I had something. Yeah, looking at the timeline for the construction.
Yes.
Exactly when would it start? Is it March of 2020?
They are talking about construction starting in November of 2019. I personally think they could probably do it sooner than that. They've built in an awful lot of time for release of bids and pre-construction conferences. But they're looking at signing a construction contract in November.
So construction could start any time after that?
Yes.
And the payment process would be concluded before the end of the fiscal year?
And the what?
The payment for, no, construction and services?
We would need to obviously have funding available to sign the construction contract, yes.
So it would be all done in this current fiscal year?
In the next fiscal year.
2020?
Yeah. It's always hard when you're in the middle of budget, to talk about budget years. Which one are you talking about?
And we're looking at a total cost point of $5,466?
Yes.
And the difference from that to $3,138?
Yeah, again, the $3,138, I think, was initially an estimate based on building only, without a lot of the thought costs and things like furniture fixtures, engineering costs, some of the study costs that go into this in terms of wetlands and stuff like that. But clearly, the biggest factor in escalating and changing the cost has been the construction cost just increasing so dramatically.
And that's for a million?
Or 4.1.
Ninety-two, 4.1.
Just for the building, yes.
So we have to come up with approximately 2.1 million?
2 million.
2 million? To get from 3.138 to 5.466?
Well, you have to remember, even on the original estimate, we were underfunded. Because if you look back at the original estimate, which is the first column there under February, we were about 1.2 million short.
We authorized bond last year for $3,138.
Correct, and that's...
So in order to get to 5.466, we're looking at something in the neighborhood of 2.4.
Well, if you go back up top, we had a little bit of money left over from the fire station location study, not a whole lot, $13,000. We have available bond funding of $3,453,000, which composed a couple different bond issues.
Correct.
One was the 3 million you were talking about, and there was another one before that.
Could we get a report on what those other sources are?
Yes, they were part of the initial one that I set out. I can recirculate that, though.
Counselor Ray?
So I think referring back to when the Building Committee was here, I think we heard that we're hoping to replicate this design in the next iterations.
Yes.
Can we expect a similar cost, or will there be cost reduction as we iterate on it, or...
There should certainly be some cost reductions in the architect and engineering costs associated with the project. I would hope that there would be some reduction in the building construction costs, particularly from the vendor who does the first station, since they will have had the experience doing one of these projects and can probably figure out through that experience how to do things a little bit more efficiently the next time around. One of the possibilities, and I don't have a recommendation on how we should proceed yet, but one of the possibilities is, once we get done with this first one, that we start just looking at a design-build process, where we look to pick an architect or that we use. Look to build a, to find a construction firm that we would be comfortable with working with. Maybe the initial one and negotiate a price on it. I'm just throwing that as a possibility. I don't know that that would be acceptable either to you folks or the Finance Committee, but it might be one possible approach.
Definition of design-build versus...
Instead of, instead of going back through the entire bidding process, negotiate if we have a, if we're happy with the contractor that does the first process, just trying to negotiate a new price for the second one. As opposed to bidding it. Design-build, we didn't use it in this process because of the, this was the first time through. But in design, they used design-build on the middle school expansion. And the idea is that you get, you get a team, you hire a team, which is an architect and a contractor, who work together through the whole process. The idea being that the contractor can look at the architect and say, "Oh, no, that's a really stupid thing you're designing there. You ought to do something different, since they're the ones who have to build it." And the theory being that sometimes you can get a better price. The difficulty is that you don't have any measuring stick against which to measure how the price is coming out, as you do when you do go through a bid process.
Other questions? All right, we'll break until 7:00?
Thank you.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the people, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with a mayoral recognition for Fardausa Mukhtar. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
I did? Okay. Who received on Friday, March 22nd, she received the Hardy Girls Healthy Women Health Promoter Award. And she attends Wayne Fleet Academy, but she lives in Lewiston. And I'm just gonna read a little bit about her from the bio that Hardy Girls Healthy Women provided. Fardausa is quiet, shy, and not entirely comfortable voicing her opinions. However, her quiet leadership has led to healthier programs for youth in Lewiston. Through her sheer will and effort, she overcame her shyness, and while she does not enjoy public speaking, by the end of last summer, she was leading community youth programings, maintaining her own garden bed, coordinating work in youth-led gardens, and helping design healthy and exciting menus for the community youth cooking sessions. While Fardausa is still humble and shy, she embodies the values of open-mindedness, curiosity, and bravery. Her efforts have made Lewiston a healthier, happier place to live. And that was from Eliza, who is here, who is Fardausa's mentor in her after-school and summer program. So, Fardausa, if you want to come up and get your certificate, and then we'll take a picture with the entire City Council.
Places, people, places.
Marty, if you don't want in, you may want to.
Yeah, we are. We know that.
I go in the corner.
Sorry.
Who did?
We're talking about lawyers.
Wish I had a better answer.
What's that? No, you're right there.
We'd like to be hired.
You got it. Awesome. Thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take up Agenda Item Number Eight.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to take Agenda Item Eight out of order. All those in favor of suspending the rules at this time? Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Now, the motion before you is Item Number Six. Public hearing and first passage to contract, I'm sorry. It's number eight. Sorry about that. Number eight. Amendment to the rules governing the City Council to update the procedures for public comment. Requested action: To approve the proposed amendment to the rules governing the City Council, City Policy Manual Number Six. And the mayor has asked me to read the three pages of the rules that are to be amended and adopted. So, number, Section Fifteen. Rules and procedures governing public comment periods. The City Council meetings are conducted to carry on the official business of the city of Lewiston. All meetings of the City Council, except executive sessions, are open to the public. The public is cordially invited to attend all City Council meetings and to participate in them consistent with the provisions of this policy, and with the exception of City Council workshops, which are primarily intended for the council and staff to review and discuss items prior to their appearance on a regular City Council meeting. The intent of this policy is to allow fair and adequate opportunity for the public to be heard, to express opinions and concerns related to the business of the city, and to provide adequate time for the City Council to obtain information and opinions on subjects before it, while ensuring that the time allotted for the public input does not interfere with the addressing of the scheduled agenda. To carry out these purposes, the following rules and procedures shall govern the public comment period at all Lewiston City Council meetings. General public comment. A public comment period shall be conducted near the beginning of all regular City Council meetings, at which time Lewiston residents will have the opportunity to be heard on matters directly relating to city business that are not included on the regular agenda. Individuals addressing the council during the public comment period will limit their comments to three minutes. Up to fifteen minutes will be allocated for general public comment periods. If the public comment period exceeds fifteen minutes, the public comment period will be suspended by the proceeding officer to allow the council to conduct its business and out of courtesy for those attending the meeting for a specific agenda item. The council will not engage in dialogue with the public during this time. Questions posed during the public comment period will be followed up upon after the meeting. Individuals requesting further information should leave their contact information with the city administrator. The general public comment period will not be conducted at workshops, emergency meetings, or special meetings of the City Council. Addressing specific agenda items. In addition, public comments will be allowed during the meeting on those items requiring a public hearing or on other items appearing on the agenda. These comments should be directly related to the specific agenda item being addressed. Public comments will not be taken during workshops unless a request is made to the presiding officer by an individual counselor. Rules governing public comment periods. One, since meetings are broadcast and recorded, persons wishing to speak must use the public podium located to the left side of the audience, and speakers must preface their comments by giving their full name and address. Two, comments must be limited to issues or concerns directly related to Lewiston municipal government. Public comment on matters not related to the city business will not be allowed, so as to make sure that all meetings are carried out in a productive and efficient time and in keeping with the interests of all who attend and participate in a council meeting. Three, per state law found in Title I, Section 408, complaints or charges from the public about an individual employee will not be permitted. We encourage you to address such comments by, we encourage you to address such comments by directly contacting the city administrator or city attorney for their immediate follow-up and review. Four, comments related to the following will be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. A, specific situations that are in litigation, including those in which the city is a party, issues of a criminal or legal nature should be addressed with the Lewiston Police Department or other criminal justice agency. Individual employees and/or employee groups will not be permitted to discuss matters for which complaint or grievance procedures are provided. B, personnel disputes between the speaker and other private resident, I'm sorry, personal disputes between the speaker and other private residents not germane to city business. Or C, support for or opposition to any candidate for political office. Five, individuals will be restricted to speaking once during the general public comment period and once per public comment period for each specific agenda item. Six, individuals addressing the council shall direct their remarks exclusively to the presiding officer. No person other than the, than the elected officials and the individual at the podium shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through members of the council. The public comment period is an opportunity for residents to express their views on matters relating to city business. Seven, as a limited designated public forum, the City Council does not have the right to prohibit disparaging, rude, or other remarks of a personal nature. But because of the potential implications, including personal liability of the speakers, we encourage any speakers to strive to be accurate in their statements and avoid making personal, rude, or provocative remarks. Eight, all statements should respect the dignity and seriousness of the proceeding. Nine, persons present at City Council meetings shall not interrupt, nor applaud, nor otherwise express approval or disapproval of any statements made or action taken at such meeting, except for those instances that are listed on the City Council agenda under public recognition, where the mayor or a city counselor are formally recognizing an individual or group for their accomplishment. The presiding officer will direct any individual not operating in accord with these guidelines to cease such action or risk being asked to be seated or removed. If such conduct continues, the presiding officer will call a recess, request the removal of such person from the chambers, adjourn the meeting, or take other such appropriate action. Repeated violations by any individual result in the presiding officer revoking that individual's right to speak at future meetings. Should the presiding officer fail to take action, any counselor may move that the presiding officer enforce the rules and guidelines, and if determined, request that the council vote on the motion.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion on the council. Counselor Ray.
So, I have a couple of questions. Last page, there's a typo, which would be "an" individual, not "and" individual, under Statement Nine.
Yes.
Yes. And then, I have some concerns about, under rules governing public comment periods, number one, when we're asking folks to come to the podium and use that, is that respecting accessibility? Is there a way for us to provide a microphone to someone if they are not able to stand at the podium?
Yes, we do have a portable microphone that we can provide.
And we could also probably allow them to use the table.
Yes, you could also -- yes, I think that, you know, the mayor and members of the council, with the mayor's permission, always have the option of allowing somebody to speak from the table in front. We generally restrict that to staff members or people making a more formal presentation, but that's always another option.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying those two questions.
Counselor Lyson.
Yes, thank you. Under Section Four of the rules governing public comment period, there is a sentence that says, "Individual employees and/or employee groups will not be permitted to discuss matters for which complaint or grievance procedures are provided." Could you explain that a little bit? Because often, people wanna come and talk about, be it a budgetary thing or whatever. And I don't know if there's grievances, I don't know the grievance process necessarily, what's provided in that, but I'm concerned about people not feeling they can come here and talk in the public, you know, when there's a grievance procedures are provided. So, I just need some further clarification on that.
This is Martin Eisenstein, the city attorney. I think what's meant by that is if there is a specific grievance that is filed, then that is the procedure to address the particular point of concern. But if there's a concern about the city policy that affects employees, or even one employee, that's -- it's fair game to speak about that at the city council meeting. It's not meant to bar that kind of conversation.
So, if the grievance has already been filed in hearing, then it's not appropriate. But otherwise, that would be --
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on the council. To the public.
Kathy, that was a mouthful. I think that the --
So, can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm Heather Everly, 17 Howe Street, Lewiston, Maine. This is an aggressive council activism. It's a retaliative response without proof of malice. It's limiting different points of view, and it's discriminative. Perhaps, in your eyes, this is a functional intervention, but ultimately, it neglects the First Amendment right of Lewiston's citizens. Antecedent control procedures, such as these, are used to evoke desired response by manipulating the social environment. This reaction haphazardly suggests implementing without thorough consideration of Lewiston's people's rights and opinions. Presumption is that content-based restrictions are unconstitutional. We have the right to dissidents, without a tread on rights, to unfettered debate and commentary when there is no breach of peace within these walls, and you have not proven these burdens of the Consecuence -- of the Constitution to squelch us. This timing during controversial issue is censorship. No rules or procedure have been violated. This is an obstruction of justice. Government officials cannot silence speech because it criticizes them. You may not essentially gag someone because you believe they're a gadfly or a troublemaker. The highest scrutiny to limitations of our enormous First Amendment right is promised. Public forum free speech rights received, heightened protection. The cornerstones of reasonability and viewpoint neutrality protect us. Our government is allowed to decide the time, place, and manner. However, they cannot do this following criticism, vague or otherwise. Our public officials are our willful servants and are subject to the widest scrutiny and criticism. Candidates place their whole lives before the public. When elected, your key responsibility is to us, and we have the right to air our concerns and our various views. Per the Sedition Act, criticism of their official conduct does not lose its constitutional protection merely because it is effective criticism and hence diminishes their official reputation. Be prepared to tolerate coarse criticism of yourselves and your policies, procedures, programs, services, and employees. The proposed amendment discriminates against those with other points of view and does not allow for fair and adequate opportunity for the public to be heard, to express opinions and concerns related to the city. Traditionally, regulations that have allowed -- been allowed have been set prior to use in controversial case, without motives of suppressed speech. It is difficult to see which criticisms are related to public servants' fitness and to rely on your self-serving bias. The people do not yield sovereignty to the agencies which serve us. Adopting these amendments would be tomfoolery. Retaliation is the most frequently alleged bias of discrimination and the most common finding in federal law sector cases. Two burdens you have are, does the proposal exhibit reasonability? And two, is the proposed viewpoint neutral and non-discriminative? Litigation has not fared well to those who attempt to squelch, especially when it's retaliative in nature. You cannot limit our expressions, we are not a peanut gallery. Opinions of the process are at the heart of democratic government. You call this a city with the biggest heart. Why are you discriminating upon content of speech? Diverse participation ought be encouraged. Robust public discourse is healthy. Be accountable and put city residents' interests before your own interests without political motivation or disregard of due process. I am working on a memorandum, and I request that this matter be tabled, or preferably tossed. We are being tone-policed. Whether you believe this has to do with you or not, I implore that it does, because the slippery slope can quickly lead to censorship of particular points of view, including your own. Please remember that impermissible viewpoints are prohibited due to discrimination. Per our United States Constitution First Amendment, we have the right to redress grievances or bridge free speech. Our representatives cannot prohibit public criticism of the council's acts or omissions or the city policies, procedures, programs, or services.
You have one minute left. Thank you.
My name's Melissa Dunn. I'm a community organizer. I live and reside in the downtown, 254 Blake Street. Doing community organizing work, and like experiencing this change with the public comment, my first concern was, what about poor and working-class people? It really is a direct assault on poor people. It was intentionally a direct assault on a poor woman. When public addresses city council, it's the only power that we have as poor people. We don't know how to navigate media sometimes. We don't know where to go when all the other avenues shut the door in our face. It's easy to say there's a grievance policy when self-advocacy is challenging. Filing grievances often is not a process where transparency exists. So, what is one to do when, like, law enforcement, like, school officials, or any of power holders that we go to, like, really close the door? We come to you as power holders because, really, there's no other choice. Anonymity also should be honored. For people who wanna speak publicly, they have the right to remain anonymous and have testimony delivered anonymously. Now, power holders are accountable to us. You as power holders are accountable to us. Even you, city attorney, is accountable to us. Retaliatory action to silence people doesn't limit -- it's intended to limit the setting power that you have, especially on public speaking, but it doesn't limit yours. It just limits public participation because we're seen as a nuisance to the council that we're talking about issues that people knew about, and they're issues that people should address, because there's a bigger conversation about things like sexual assault, or poor people's struggles, or whatever the case might be. Now, it's also a direct assault on the ethics and the value and promises of transparency by this local government. And by this show of retaliatory action, it really infringes on our rights, our democracy, the governance, and transparency by this city council. When -- I also have great concern because of the language. I was here at the last city council where Counselor Marcott had spoke and -- had spoke to, like, shut down a speaker at public council or comment, whatever. And in that moment, it made me also think about poor and working-class people. If they share their experiences, is it because of, like, however we are imposed, like, a biased view, as a negative view, or seen as, like, we're defaming somebody, or being derogatory, or slandering somebody, when really, it wasn't that about that at all? It was just trying to get the truth out and to hold people accountable who knew about the issues that were -- that had arisen. And at the end of the day, you're all power holders, and we have the right to hold you accountable, whether you like it or not. That's the reality of it. We're not -- and as poor and working-class people, we have that right, because we're your constituents. We put you in those seats.
You have one minute.
So, I see this as a threat to the people. I see this even as tax-paying poor people and working-class people. The other concern is that there's a call to have us physically removed by law enforcement. And that is -- that puts people in great danger. And I hope you all know that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sass Winnigan. I live in Winthrop, Maine, but I organize and work in Lewiston a lot of the time. I first wanna reference the Point Three under rules governing public comment periods that says, "Per state law found in Title I, Section 408, complaints or charges from the public about an individual employee will not be permitted." But Title I, Section 408 of Maine state law is a statute about public records available for inspection and copying, which says, "Except as otherwise provided by statute, a person has the right to inspect and copy any public record in accordance with this section within a reasonable time of making the request to inspect or copy the public record." So, if you're going to reference Maine state law to silence people, you probably wanna make sure that you're referencing a law that exists. I assume it must somewhere, if you're saying that it does, but this isn't it. That is my first point. My second point is that nothing in the First Amendment offers a loophole if you don't like what people are saying, so threatening to have people physically removed if they don't adhere to these guidelines, which are basically telling people that they literally don't have a right to address you directly in public, which is like a massive classism issue. You all are holding power. You all have the opportunity to make law and make policy, and the people here are depending on you to listen to them. And if the only place that they can air their grievances is in private, what does that mean for the way that power is held? And what does it mean in a city that has a large population of people that are low-income? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back to the council. Counselor Ray.
So, could we check on that stat -- being statute?
I believe it's supposed to be Section 405, not 408.
Could we check on that before we vote?
I'm pretty much positive that's true. We will -- we will check online, but it's --
Marty's gonna check.
Okay, great. And then, so, for me reading this, the substantive changes that I see are moving from five-minute allotted time to three-minute allotted time, and then also very explicit in the potential action taken by the presiding officer. I think a lot of these things have been assumed, but having them on paper, it's always -- it seems good to me to have policy written down to guide us. I do personally object to the all-caps language used in Section Two about directly, and there is another section in all-caps that does feel particularly intimidating, and like, this is very authoritative, authoritarian, one of those two. And so, I can see, you know, some of the perspectives brought forward that this is intimidating. But I personally think that we've been following these rules, just those timing differences seem like the difference to me, which is interesting. But that's what they do at the State House, is three minutes, I think, so that makes sense. Thanks.
Other comments from the council? So, I would just say, and Marty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually don't have to allow general public comment period at all. Correct? So, I just wanna be clear about that. Secondly, as Counselor Ray said, the major substantive change is going from five minutes to three minutes, which is consistent with what happens at the State House during public hearings and in most other places. I'm pretty sure that we just did not limit content in any way. That is, nowhere in here does it say that we're limiting content. What it is saying is that the purpose of these meetings and the reason that we are here is to conduct city business, and items that are related to city business will absolutely be heard. I mean, you just heard people saying things about all of us sitting up here that were not gavel-down. I did not draw anyone back. So, I just wanna be clear about that. What this does is sort of determine time, manner, and place, regulates time, manner, and place in terms of public comment. I would say that, you know, rules here are put in place to protect people as well. And I think that's it. And it's Title I, Section 405. So, if we could make that correction --
That's correct.
-- in the motion, that would be great. Other comments from the council? Counselor Marcott?
Has a motion been made?
Not yet. Would you like to make it?
I make motion approve with an addendum that we change all of the caps to lower case.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Counselor from words seven?
Yes.
Word one?
No.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
No.
Word four?
Yes. Sorry.
That's not you.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to three.
Five to two.
Five to two? Right. Sorry about that. We'll double-check. Motion passed by a vote of five to two. So, the next item would be public comment period.
Sure.
Oh.
Can we just clarify what's going on with the technology now that three minutes has been approved? Just so everyone knows.
Yeah, so, the -- when we were on that last item, because we hadn't approved the new rules, we were at five-minute public comment period. Now that we've approved the new rules, we're down to the three-minute public comment period. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Bob McDonald, 6 Jolene Street, Lewiston. Councilmembers and Madam Mayor, forty years ago, forty-two years ago, my brother and I left Massachusetts to get away from -- we know what's
Yeah, so the, when we were on that last item, because we hadn't approved the new rules, we were at five-minute public comment period. Now that we've approved the new rules, we're down to the three-minute public comment period.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Bob McDonald, 6 Jolene Street, Lewiston. Councillor Members and Madam Mayor. Forty years ago, forty-two years ago, my brother and I left Massachusetts to get away from, we know what's good for you liberal progressives that wanted to dictate our lives. We thought we were rid of them. But after forty-plus years, they have managed to secrete themselves into Maine's life and slowly control the lives of Mainers. Currently, the city of Lewiston stands to gain millions of dollars yearly in much-needed tax revenues. From this, from a power corridor running from, through Lewiston, connecting Canada and Massachusetts. The unidentified opposition pouring money into Maine in order to kill the project, probably funded by out-of-state unidentified sources that don't want to view, that they don't want the view from their property ruined by the corridor. I would also like to remind Mainers that these people are the same people who have priced many Maine, many native Mainers out of their hometowns. This project is a boon for Lewiston taxpayers. I assume the members of the council are for it. But it's time you start taking, you start making some noise. Okay? I never say anything in the papers about this. I see, all there is is silence from this council, and I know you are for it. It's also time for Lewiston's local state legislators to start making noise. Remember, your number-one duty to represent, is to represent Lewiston and its taxpayers, not out-of-state environmentalists. I was supposed to go to Farmington, but I thought I would be better served by coming to the council tonight. So thank you very much, and I hope we hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Hi, Heather Everly, 17 How Street, Lewiston, Maine. I just wanted to say that Ms. Kirsten, Kristin Cludier, was in DC when I told Susan Collins about me giving Shane Bouchard, the mayor, the emails. So she knew someone was going to come along and share this information someday, and she knew that she'd be the person that benefited from it. So I just thought everybody should know that.
Thanks. All right, public comment period is closed.
All votes for this meeting, sorry, all roll-call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Ward 7, although the councillor from Ward 7 has asked that they be changed to Ward 6. Is that right, councillor Markcott?
That's correct.
So, just for clarification, the city council does rotate who is leading the votes at each meeting. And councillor Markcott noted that at the last meeting councillor Beam was absent, had an excused absence, but was supposed to start the voting. So we went to the next ward in line, which is Ward 7. So he felt out of fairness, it should go back to councillor Beam to give her an opportunity to vote. So it's pre-printed on the agenda as 7, because that would be the next normal course of action, but he has requested that it go to 6. So unless there's any objections to that, I think we'll have the councillor from Ward 6 begin with votes. Is that your request, councillor Markcott?
Correct. Jolene, do you have any issues with this? Jolene? No? Okay, thanks.
So all roll-call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Ward 6. Consent agenda, there are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds. Item number two, approval of election warrant, calling for a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, for the school budget validation referendum and recommendations from the city clerk registrar of voters on actions necessary to conduct said election. And number three, order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 90 Spring Street.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by councillor Lyson, seconded by councillor LaJoy. All those in favor?
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number four.
Item number four, public hearing on a new application for a new liquor license for the Curio 110 Lisbon Street. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new liquor license application for the Curio 110 Lisbon Street.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Lyson. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Councillor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
You forgot me. Forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Madam Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
My sheets are pre-printed, and they start with word 7, so that's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and final passage to contractually rezone the property at 110 Blake Street and 82 Pine Street from the downtown residential district to the Sontreville district. Requested action to approve final passage of the amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to contractually rezone the property at 110 Blake Street and 82 Pine Street from the downtown residential district to the Sontreville district, subject to contractual agreement.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by councillor Lyson, seconded by councillor Ray. Any discussion on the council? Councillor Ray?
Can we just clarify, that's 111 Blake Street and not 110? I'm sorry, did I say 110? 111 is printed in your book?
Yes.
Yes, 111.
Okay, thank you. So this is the final passage. Do you want to just give an overview?
Do I ask either David or Doug? The council will remember that you folks acted on this at the first reading. This is a contract rezoning to support CCI's development of 35-unit multifamily structure. The planning board voted on this matter, sent it to you folks. They needed the contract zoning basically to get the density that they were looking for, it's 35 units there on the property. I'm not sure how much more of a summary you folks would like with respect to that. Certainly, the applicants here, they can answer any specific questions with respect to the project.
Are there any questions? To the public? Back to the council?
My name is Melissa Dunn, pronouns they/them, 254 Blake Street in Lewiston. I'm a community organizer, and I've been organizing folks in the downtown for a really long time. And I've been here to speak at council about the poor housing stock that we have. I guess, like, my comment's just like being in support of low-income housing and like new development, mixed-income housing. I think it's really important, and like, I'm really excited to know there's people that want to invest in my community. The biggest thing and the biggest challenge that I have is that people aren't totally including people that are poor and working-class folks in these discussions. We're an afterthought. And it's great that people want to do things for us, but like, please include us from the bottom up, all the way, and, and teach us about economic development. Do things out of the norm. Make space for us. It's so much deeper than housing and low-income housing and mixed-income housing when we're talking about poor people and working-class people, really, how, as far as like housing and health when it comes to the downtown. I know a lot of people are thinking they're doing a good thing, and that might be the case, but we're suffering from Whitesaver complex. And if you don't know what it is, please look it up. Do anything you can to fix that. I just want people in the downtown's voices included at all levels. It's really critical from the beginning to the top, especially when we're talking about housing. The reality is gentrification is happening here. It has happened. You can get a $1,400 apartment for generational cockroaches, lead, no heat during the winter, frozen pipes. But, and I also live in a complex that was an initiative of St. Mary's and Community Concepts. It's a condo. So what happens is like after everybody's said and gone, like, we were in the red as far as condo dues, and not able to make repairs for our porches, our roofs. So there's systemic things that happen long after there's a building that's created that, you know, is supposed to give us like purchasing power and buying power, but like we're in a predicament in some of these locations where we're struggling because we're poor. And so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Reed, 58 Albert Street. I'd like to thank you for development. It's always good for a city to have development. Offering a place that is lead-free in the downtown should be commended, and I truly wish I could commend you for doing so, but I can't. As likely people will come from that housing stock, moving into the new lead-free homes, others will take their place in, in substandard housing. So the lead problem isn't taken care of. You've done little to address that issue. You haven't changed any of the conditions that are substandard. Instead, we hear tales of sorrow that if you actually enforced the expectations of safe and healthy living conditions, the buildings would be empty, and those rental businesses would fail. Maybe in this case, failure is an option. Second, Lewiston does need development, and this project meets the need. Or does it? While the owners will see a profit over time, Lewiston will get much less than deserved, something we seem always too quick to agree to. In terms of pure economics, given 20 of these apartments will be multi-bedroom, additional bedrooms we're going to assume are for children, it's likely that's going to add 30 children to our schools. The taxes during the TIF period, if we have a 50% TIF, are about 1/6 the cost for the schooling, busing, educational cost for those students. 1/6. When we come off the TIF, we might be lucky and have a third of the cost. But that's before the state then says, "You're no longer a TIF, so your valuation as a city goes up, and we're going to give you less money for your schools." Long after the housing is there, we'll be paying the bill. So pat yourselves on the back for such a great project, but look at the economics of the deal and what it's going to mean to Lewiston that many of us will still live in in 20 years. A review just two years ago that I did showed that Lewiston's untaxed property was growing at a rate four times our taxed property. That is not a sustainable model for any city. If it continues, you will lose residents, and you will lose businesses who will go elsewhere where the taxes are lower. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Shannon Cox at 119 Ash Street here in Lewiston. I wasn't going to speak, but I, while I appreciate the comments and the recognition of the lead both as a problem, I would like to first thank the city, which has made significant strides in addressing our substandard housing stock. There is much work to be done, but I think it's important to note the good work that has been done. In the return on investment economic conversation that Mr. Reed just noted, I would like to point out that that equation didn't factor in the return of investment of children as our future workforce. And children continue to be framed in parts of this conversation as a burden to this community. I see a lot of young faces in the room today, and I'm thankful for what they're contributing, the taxes that they're paying, the work that they're doing, the jobs that they're filling, and I'm excited for their future. And so if we're going to talk about the economics, we should talk about the increased return on investment when you make investments into high-density areas. The fact that if there were 30 children, it is unlikely that all 30 of them were somehow from outside of this community and new to the school system, which is an error in the basic math there. And it's really important to recognize that when low-income people are putting their, their lives into the local economy, they're putting more dollars into the local economy. And if you factor that in, as well as the, the mixed-income market-rate apartments, we're putting 35 households into walking distance of our hospitals, our stores, our restaurants, our bars. So that's good for the local economy. Lastly, I think it's just really important to recognize that when we're making investments into our community, we need to think about the, the long-term range. And right now, even in the, in the short term, where we're getting half of the TIF for the first portion of time, that's, that's structured to be 15 times the tax that we're receiving on those empty lots. And given those empty lots have some environmental hazards, it is unlikely that another development would invest the remediation dollars into it and then bring on the tax return that even the half TIF, let alone the post-full TIF, would give us. And so I just think the math on this actually warrants a deeper look at all of the factors. And I think we should stop factoring our children is, as a burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back to the council. Councillor Markcott?
Two weeks ago, I made some of these comments, but trying to add a little bit here. Recycling federal, state, and local taxes is not economics. And we need to spend more time on growing our workforce. I think our development director needs to spend more time on that, because the jobs just aren't there to bring more people into this community and simply find some way to subsistence off of a government program somehow. Lewiston seniors who have spent a lifetime of paying taxes are already strained, as we have seen by recent abatement requests. This project will inevitably place more burden on the taxpaying members of our community who can least afford it. This is not sound planning, as it does not take into account Lewiston's current financial load and precarious budgetary future. 30 new students into the local area, like we heard testimony tonight, would be six or seven times, and that suggests the Department of Education. That doesn't include all of the other services provided by a community. I just can't fathom with seeing seniors pick up and leave this community and others who are on a threshold, such as the abatement request, picking up and leaving this community, leaving us more desperate in the future, you know, with more of these projects. If we continue to do the same thing over and over and get the same result of the last 30, 40 years, that is the definition of insanity. We need to do something to bring actual jobs to this community, jobs that are actually better paying than what we've seen in the past. And hopefully, our students who graduate and stay here can acquire those jobs, instead of leaving the community for education and staying away after that education, or finding a social program to live on once they become, come to maturity. Thank you.
So I'm realizing that councillor Beam wasn't here for the original presentation, so I'm wondering if there's a bridged version that the folks from Avesta want to give?
Good evening. My name is Sean Yadlin. I'm the CEO of Community Concepts here in Lewiston. We've been a community action agency for the last 53 years. We've been in Lewiston physically for the last eight years, and we annually serve almost 20,000 people by providing critical support services to help people make, meet their basic needs, by engaging with businesses to help support them in growing their businesses, both startups and businesses that are looking to expand. We estimate that we've helped support or create over 700 jobs, so we're more than just a social service agency. We also have managed a portfolio of 175 units of housing across western Maine, including 76, which are here in Lewiston. Last year, we partnered with Avesta to start exploring opportunities to bring new housing to Lewiston, which is why we're here tonight. As you know from our past meetings, we are proposing the development of a 35-unit mixed-income building at the corner of Blake and Pine, just a couple of blocks from our office and from our Bates Street senior housing. Avesta is the developmental consultant, development consultant, helping us through the financing permitting and the construction phase of this project. We are working with a local team because we think this will help the building fit into the neighborhood and be more successful. Gabrielle Russell and Tom Platts are here tonight, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from them in a few minutes. We've also selected a local contractor, Hebert Construction, who is familiar with the site, the neighborhood, and the characteristics of the city. I'm also joined here at the table with Catherine Elliott, the development officer from Avesta, who is working with us on this project. who is working with us on this project, as well as Dana Taubman, Avesta's CEO, and Rebecca Hatfield, the Vice President of Real Estate Development and Management, both of whom are here in the audience. As most of you saw at the meeting last month, there is an extensive community support for this project. Community leaders and residents recognize the need for new development in the downtown neighborhood, and there is a deep need for safe housing that is lead-free, accessible, and mixed income. This proposal does all of that. And I want to add that we've been very active partnering with the city on the lead issue, and we continue to do so. So we do not see this 35 units as the answer, but it is part of the solution. We have to replace bad housing. The city has been very aggressive, and to their credit, in taking down housing that is unsafe and frankly dangerous, but they have not been able to replace at the same rate. This is a step in that direction. Thank you.
I'm just going to briefly run through a little bit of information about the contract zone and then how it relates to the comprehensive plan for the benefit of the council members. As has been discussed, this references 82 Pine Street and 111 Blake Street, which are currently located in the downtown residential district. Our contract zone request is that this be rezoned to the Centreville Zone with some additional restrictions. We recognize the downtown nature of this particular area, but also know that there are some important residential characteristics of this neighborhood that we want to preserve. So for that reason, for example, the Centreville Zone has no density restriction, and we are imposing a density restriction so that no more than 35 units could be built on this site. Similarly, the Centreville Zone has no setback requirements. We are imposing setback requirements with this contract zone so that it is a more residential feel. Similarly, with the front yard requirements, which are not required in the Centreville Zone, we would include those in this contract zone. We would be keeping the downtown residential height restriction of 60 feet as opposed to the unrestricted height of the Centreville Zone. We would also have less lot coverage of this building than would be allowed under the Centreville Zone because we want to maintain some of that space and residential feel of the parcel. And then there are a couple of other things that we identified in our conversations with city staff and community groups and walking the neighborhood with our design team that are important to making this building feel like it is part of a neighborhood. One of those things is raising the first floor up off of grade. Most of the triple-deckers and other buildings in the area have at least several steps up to that first floor, which is something that we would be doing with this building so that it does, so that it does still have that feel and helps bridge the difference between the higher-density Centreville Zone and the increasingly residential as you go out further in the downtown residential zone. And then just a couple of items relating to how this is supported by and talked about in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan identifies eight interest areas, one of which is housing stability and neighborhood choice. And there are four policy areas related to that, all of which are met by this particular proposal. It's a development that's located in a growth area. It is investment in a downtown neighborhood. It would improve the quality of affordable housing, and it's also mixed-income housing. There was some concern that's been raised by council members that we are just focusing on the ways in which the comprehensive plan supports this project, which I recognize. But in all reality, I've read this comprehensive plan many times, and although there are areas that do not specifically speak to housing, that's not because they're not consistent with the goals. So when you look at the transportation section, for example, there's a high emphasis on reducing the reliance on surface parking, on promoting walkability, on encouraging the use of existing infrastructure. This particular building is located within walking distance of five bus lines. The parking, we are not building any parking on-site, or, I'm sorry, we are building parking on-site, but it would be located underneath the building. And the balance of the parking spots would be located in the local Oak Street, or Oak and Park garage, in accordance with the parking ordinance that was passed late last year. Other goals outlined in the economic development section focusing on the need for additional employee housing, references the number of new jobs that are anticipated in Andrusgoggin County by 2020, and the relative need that that indicates for housing. And the environmental section also speaks to the need to remediate contaminated soils and address other things like that that we are finding on this particular site. This is also located in the infill growth sector, which has been identified for growth, specifically focusing on the need to fill in the urban fabric and take care of the vacant lots that are located in this area. And then just to briefly touch on a couple of the concerns that have been raised tonight, regarding the concerns about school capacity, we're talking, so we're talking about 35 units here. There used to be 18 units on this site, so this is not a steep departure from the number of units that were previously located on this site. There have also been hundreds of units that have been taken offline in past years, so we're not looking at an overall add of people. Of these 35 units, about half would be one-bedroom units, which would likely only have one person living in them. There would be 14 two-bedroom units and six three-bedroom units. And based on Avesta's occupancy data across our entire portfolio of family housing, we would expect about 20 to 25 children to be living in this building. Of those, we would expect about 75% of them to already be living within the Lewiston suburban area, and, which would indicate that there would be maybe an add of six students. And that's, that's the range of 0 to 18. So the impact of that on the schools would be negligible. And then regarding existing housing, there's, the concern about lead is real. Lead poisoning is a huge problem. There are a lot of ways to address this, and one of the ways is by adding new housing. The city of Lewiston, as Sean indicated, as Lincoln Jeffers spoke at our last meeting, has done a lot of work remediating lead, including remediating over, close to 600 units' worth of housing in recent years. That said, the rate of that work, it would take 70 years at that current rate to remediate all of the lead-poisoned buildings in the downtown area. And that's a lot of years for kids to keep getting poisoned. And beyond that, there is just extensive need for additional housing. The comprehensive plan exists, estimates that more than 600 units, or about 600 units, would be needed by 2020. And furthermore, a market study that we did last year indicated that about 7.5% of renters in Lewiston are living in substandard overcrowded units that lack electricity or lack plumbing. And we also heard last month testimony from various individuals who have struggled to find housing that meets their needs. So new housing is clearly needed. That doesn't mean that lead remediation efforts won't or shouldn't continue, because they should. But this is one of the tools that we can use, and it's a tool that is clearly supported by the comprehensive plan in a number of different ways. We would be providing new housing, lead-free housing, housing with local landlords and responsible management companies to address needs, maintenance needs as they arise. This would be housing that would be accessible for people with, living with disabilities. It responds to the desire to fill vacant lots in the urban downtown fabric and encourage greener transportation. It also promotes the use of existing infrastructure. And at the end of the day, the building would be designed, built, and owned by local teams who are invested in this community and want to see Lewiston be the best city that it can. And approving this zone change is just one step in that direction. Thank you.
And we're certainly here to answer. I know you've all seen the plans, you've all seen the building. If you have any questions about the architecture, or structure, or parking, or anything in that light, we're certainly here to answer those questions. I would want to point out the comment that there are no jobs here. I know personally, we're working on a lot of projects. We have over $35 million in construction planned in the next 24 months. We cannot get labor. There are plenty of jobs, and we need to provide housing to bring people in here so we can attract businesses and they know that they can hire people. And we are very short on people available for jobs right now. And this will go a long way towards helping that. I think we have to continue in this light. And the other is, you talk about elderly moving out and leaving. I feel comfortable saying this because I'm one of those. We are going to be leaving. I think as Councilwoman Joy said, we can't change our birthdays. If we, we are going to be leaving. That's just the way it goes. We need to replenish this city with young blood, and you have to start now.
Any questions from the council? Council Pat Nig?
Not a question, just more comment. There is so much that I want to love about this project, as with the last time, I can't support it. It does infill right, it does design right, I absolutely love the building. It even does parking correctly, and I thoroughly applaud you for that. I had advocated for no parking minimums with this, but you said, "No, let's put it underneath the building." That's how it's done correctly. And then as far as density, which is one concept that is so thoroughly misunderstood, is done in the correct way. But some of the, some of the issues I have, likely one person will move into this. We know people abuse that all the time. You reference units that used to be on the structure. When was the last time that those units were up and operational? That data is severely old. Other people have moved into the city and the school system since then. So to reference that there used to be X amount of students in the school system when the structures were available, that's very possible. People have moved in, filled those spots. These new students will then move in and already burden the school system. And it's not to say that students are burdensome, because they're not. They are the key. They're the key to get out of the situation that we're in. But the problem that exists is our school system is already busting at the seams. There, there's not enough room for them, which is why the high school has, from my understanding, completely gone away from designing a much-needed visual performing arts center to just adding classrooms, that, like so much of the fact that they've changed the name of the committee for it. The problem with dealing with the lead crisis that we have right now, yeah, maybe 75% of the population that exists, exists here. Those people will move down the street, they'll move down the block, but somebody behind them is going to move into the housing that has a lead crisis. And the crux of the situation is that there is not a good mechanism for those people to know that they're moving into a building with that issue. So what's going to happen? Yes, we're going to better some people's lives, but somebody behind them is going to move in and have to deal with a child that becomes lead-poisoned. And that's, that's not anything that I know anybody wishes upon anybody else, but it is a situation that is going to happen. And then lastly, that's not a bad problem to have, and I know, you know, Mr. Platts, you can attest to it. The quickest way to halt any kind of development job is to run out of electricians and plumbers because there's so few of them in the area. Someone of your caliber, I'm sure can make a few calls and get somebody on-site. But for the rest of us that don't have that ability, I know when I needed to do some construction in my business, I was held up three weeks by a plumber who needed to install drainage for toilets. Everything was done, concrete ripped up everything. He needed to come in and attach some PVC pipe. He did it overnight because I went and checked every night to see when it was done. But it was held up for three weeks. I couldn't get tile in, I couldn't get my water turned on to do any other kind of work. I couldn't put cove, cove base down, finish up my projects and everything. So it's, there, there's jobs out there, there's not enough people to fill them, but we're sometimes placing the wrong emphasis on going to college. You can, you can get a good job going to trade school as opposed to going for, you know, a bachelor's in something else. And it would make a lot of lives easier if we got kids doing trade jobs. So, thank you.
Council Lyson?
Thank you. You know, I seem to agree with most of what you said, Zach, but you said you're against the project, and that really astounds me, but that, you know, the, we're not asking this project to kind of solve all the social issues of this community, including the lead issue. And no one's ever going to say that we don't have a lead issue, or that it's going to take a lot of time and money to replace it. This is one project which is part of a solution. And it's got a great development team, a lot of local support. I think that when we talk about the burden, or burdensome, nature of adding kids to schools is, and that this development won't pay for them for some reason, I would like us to look a little further into residential development per se. I mean, if you look at suburban residential, you talk about the infrastructure that you have to place, the services that you have to provide, and the fact that they have schooled children too. So we're not, we're never going to more than break even, we're never even going to break even from residential development for paying for schools. But that's a phase of, of people's lives. And a project like this, again, it's workforce housing, it's mixed income, it's in the right location. A big part is infrastructure. I mean, if you look at the comprehensive plan, the reason we say infill is because there are the sewers and the water in the streets running by these places. So we don't have to reinvest in that situation, we can just reconnect. Walkability, I mean, people, I remember when I was first the planning director, too many years ago to remember, but one of the things was that we had the most people who walked to work anywhere in the state of Maine, in Lewiston. And, and some, you know, part of that was because people couldn't afford cars, but also that we had a dense downtown that was close to businesses. And obviously, that needs to continue as well. Density is, and I'll agree with Zach on a bunch of things, on the parking issue and the density issue, this is where we want development to occur. So I'm not asking this development team to solve all the problems of this community, but I'm confident that we're going to have an outstanding project that's really necessary for this community. And could, it also shows investment that people want to make and move forward. So even Mr. Reed, I agree with some of your comments, but I do, I think we ought to applaud both the city and this development team on this project because it's, it's more of what we want. We've seen the Hartley Block was much criticized when that was coming through as well, and I think this, that's going to be a great success of creating the economic engines that will drive the downtown, and I think this development will as well, as has been stated. So again, fully in support of the project. It's not the total solution by any means of meeting the needs of this community, but I'd like to see more of it happen. And obviously, again, the economic equation of residential housing and schools, you're never going to get money. But you have to understand that we all had, we all have kids, we all were kids, we all need education, and schools are critically important, but also is housing. And good housing also makes good students, and that's another critical element. If people who live in a stable housing, and we talked about, and I've been on the rental registration program talking about lead, and it's one of those things that, okay, give us $70 million in 100 years and we'll solve it. But again, we need some new housing in this community, we need some new investment. We need to have a statement that low-income people matter, that they live, that they should live in safe and decent housing. And this is a step in that direction as well. So I'm just totally in favor of this project, and I look forward to the continuing process because this is really a, you know, your planning board, city council, and then we'll be talking about some of the development agreements and stuff that we'll need to do. But, you know, I'm very encouraged about that people like yourselves are interested in developing Lewiston. So thank you for your work.
Council Rick?
Thank you. So just two quick points. Everyone deserves safe and affordable housing. I will say that as many times as I need to. And the second point has to do with some of my personal work. So I've been studying millennials. We're a fascinating breed, but we are more likely to rent until much later. We're a fascinating breed, but we are more likely to rent until much later in our lives, and less likely to own a home, mostly because of crushing student loan debt. But that aside, we're more likely to live near a city center, this project aligns with that. We're less likely to own cars, again, probably because of crippling student debt. However, this project hits all of those points, and so we're also far less likely to have children. I moved to this community, I had a really hard time finding an apartment. This would have been a great option for me as a young professional without kids. I added no kids to the school system, just two cats, they don't cost much to the taxpayer, thankfully. And so I will continue to support this project and be proud to do so.
Anyone else? Councilor Marka.
I hear the word "investment" used loosely, because there is so much tax dollars in this project, whether it's coming from the feds, state, tax credits, the Lewiston people. Lewiston residents, seniors, I like to keep coming back to, and spent a lifetime paying off their home, $100,000, $129,000, $150,000. A lot of homes right now are going for, in that range, $129,000 to $150,000. And if it's assessed at $100,000, that's $2,867 that they're gonna pay to the Lewiston Treasury. This particular project, the first 10 units takes you to about $28,000, and then after that, everything's free. When you look at the total project cost, now you're looking at $200,000 per unit. Very few people living in Lewiston live in a $200,000 home. But they're paying full boat taxes and have for a lifetime, and now they're being asked to supply even more. That is the burden on this community. We can look at other metrics, we can look at median income, median family, median household, per capita. None of those numbers look good. Now, 10 years out from all these wonderful projects that existed maybe in 2007, 2008, we're worse off today than we are then. There's a reason for it. We've become a magnet and an attraction to people looking for a handout. It's not necessarily a hand up, none, because we just haven't seen it. Maybe there's something that needs to be addressed at the Department of Education. We need those plumbers and carpenters. We need the jobs that are gonna pay a little bit more to grow into the budgets that this city has seen. Unfortunately, yes, there are employers out there, my own included, that have a rough time finding qualified employees to do jobs that 30 years ago, we would have had no problem finding that employee. So, there's a cultural change in the community for educational purposes, the in-migration, the out-migration. As far as seniors leaving, and I'm sure leaving Earth permanently was the point being made, I'm talking about seniors leaving the community because of the burden of the taxes. They're on fixed incomes, they just can't do it anymore, they abandon their homes, they leave their homes, maybe go live with children, hoping to sell those homes, and then they become vandalized and lose all equity in the process. We need to do something better than simply attracting more financial burden on the Lewiston Treasury.
So I just want to remind folks that we're voting on a rezoning right now, we're not, we haven't even seen the financials for the project. Councilor Dean.
I'll say this quickly. I wasn't here, but, and I know I saw your presentation once before, I don't know if I saw it here, but I did watch everything that went on at the two meetings that I didn't attend online, which is a wonderful thing, isn't it? So I'm up on this. I love the investor project, because I think, well, it's within walking distance of the park. And I think introducing more kids to the park is just a great idea, because it gives a sense of community, and it might even encourage us to make it prettier and make it look really nice. So, and I'm a senior, and I'll pay the taxes, even though it's really hard. But my kids are gone now, so that kind of balances things, I guess.
Councilor Troy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with both sides of the equation. I think there's concerns on both sides, I think there's good points on both sides as well. One of the concerns I have is if the individuals leave old apartments to go into this one, and there are conditions, living conditions at hand, then it would be up to us or code enforcement to fix those prior to individuals moving in. I think if we don't do anything, we become stagnant. In becoming stagnant, we don't move forward, if we don't move forward, we don't gain. So, my vote would be to move the project forward. I think I've said enough.
Any other discussion on the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 7.
No.
Ward 1.
Yes.
Ward 2.
No.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I pass my vote of 5 to 2.
Agenda item number 6.
Item number 6, public hearing in first passage to contractually rezon the property at 1035 and 37 Avon Street from the Resource Conservation, Urban Enterprise, and Neighborhood Conservation B districts to the Sontreville District. Requested action to approve first passage of the amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to contractually rezon the property at 1035 and 37 Avon Street from the Resource Conservation, Urban Enterprise, and Neighborhood Conservation B districts to the Sontreville District, subject to contractual agreement, and to continue the public hearing for final passage to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Petten Gill. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Doug Green, City Planner. I want to just give you a brief overview of the planning board meeting and a report on that, and then also just a summary of the contract zoning request. I know we have Saxon Partners here tonight, but if you indulge the staff just to give you those, kind of a lead into their discussion and presentation. So, at the planning board meeting on March 25th, the planning board voted 6 to nothing to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for the contract zoning request by Saxon Partners for properties located at 1035 and 37 Avon Street from the Resource Conservation, Urban Enterprise, and Neighborhood Conservation B districts to the Sontreville District. And they also made their recommendation with the following findings, that the applicant submitted a complete application, that the resource conservation zone portion of 10 Avon Street is generally no longer located within a 100-year floodplain, that the applicant proposes uses consistent with the existing and permitted uses within the original districts, that being the Urban Enterprise, Neighborhood Conservation B districts, and that the conditions and restrictions imposed relate only to the physical development or operation of the property, and that the application is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Legacy Lewiston 2017 Comprehensive Plan. And voted 6 to nothing in the affirmative. At the meeting, there were a number of folks at the meeting, at the public hearing portion, in support. There were comments about, such as, "This is a good project for a partnership with the city, including adding a second water line service from Lake Auburn, an extension of the Andrus Goggin Greenway Trail through the property, and planned sidewalk improvements for Avon and Holland Street." Some concerns that were raised by those and opposed to the project. Their negative impacts on the neighborhood, not enough parking provided, increased traffic, too many units proposed, no guarantee that the project would not turn into low-income housing, impacts to existing, the poor quality infrastructure in the neighborhood, such as sidewalks, streets, and sewers, the inability to demonstrate the need for housing related to targeted tenants, hospital employees, apparent increase crime associated with the improvements and increased use of the Greenway Trail. So, those are the comments that were brought up at the public hearing at the planning board. And I could just quickly summarize some of the highlights of the contract zoning request. There were specific land uses requested by the developer in their application for land uses that they would have multifamily dwellings and mixed-use structures would be permitted uses, that business and professional offices, restaurants, drinking places, indoor amusement, arts and crafts, personal services, retail, and neighborhood retail would be permitted as part of a mixed-use structure, and then private or public facilities for non-intensive outdoor recreation and fitness and recreational sports centers would be permitted as accessory uses. There were some changes proposed to the bulk and yard requirements through the contract zoning request. They would want to lower the minimum net lot area per dwelling unit from 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit, that was from the Urban Enterprise Zone, to 1,180 square feet per dwelling unit. They proposed a minimum front setback of 25 feet for principal structures, zero feet for accessory structures, and the maximum height would be 80 feet for principal structures and 20 feet height for accessory structures. There were three requests for changes to the existing land use requirements. In summary, they were to allow two buildings per lot, to request a waiver of the shoreland zoning requirement that requires 40,000 square feet per lot in the shoreland zoning area, and then a waiver request of the development standards normally used in suburban-type developments that require a per-unit requirements for private open space, personal storage, and open space. So, I just wanted to wrap up with just a quick comment on contract zoning, that our local law follows state law, and that the applicant followed the zoning ordinance, which is Article 17, Section 5, which details how the planning board should make their decision on a contract zoning request. And things such as it's being consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the proposal should contain a written statement of conditions that shall only apply to the requested properties, and contains a written contract with the city with conditions or restrictions that would apply only to the property requested for the contract rezoning. The applicant provided all of these contract zoning requirements, and the staff wanted to mention that we did not consider it to be a spot zoning request. Glad to answer any questions you have, and would also be glad to pass this over to the Saxon folks.
So, if the Saxon folks want to come up and give their presentation? Councilor Marka.
I need to have a question for staff.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Mr. Green. Contract zoning. If the applicant or the parties involved in the contract zoning walk away from a project, does that mean the contract zone goes away?
The contract zoning runs with the property. In the instance, there's been a few of these, I hear, that if for some reason, maybe the development doesn't occur, or for some reason the owner chooses later on to not follow the contract zoning request, there's a process to revert back to the original zoning, underlying zone.
Repeat that, rephrase, repeat that one more time. What would cause a revert to take place?
The reversion could take place if for some reason the owner of a property that went through a contract rezoning, for whatever reason, they don't want to pursue the original request of the contract zoning. There's provisions in the regulations that allow for the original underlying, original zoning to be reverted back to what it was, if that's what the owner chooses. But I doubt someone would go through the process of a contract rezoning knowing that they would want to undo it. So that's a rare occasion that does happen.
But that, key to what you just said, if the owner wants to do it, so if the owner simply walks away, probably still owns the land, right? I don't know if, when that takes place in the process of the acquisition of the land, but gets someone else come in and end up being the property owner of that contract zone?
If the property changes hands, the new owner would continue operating under the contract zone.
Under the contract zone.
Correct.
Okay, I guess that's what I wanted to understand.
Didn't mean to go off on the side note on that.
Anyone else that council?
Other questions for staff?
I have a technical question that maybe...
For staff or for Saxon?
Actually, both, but I can ask it later.
Okay, that'd be great. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is James Bass, and I'm an attorney from Augusta on behalf of Saxon Partners. Just a quick matter, we've got a few site plans and some posters, would you mind if we put those up?
Sure.
Great. And during the planning board, we tried to orient them so both the audience and you all can see them, so let us know if we get the angles right.
So I'm Donald Smith from Saxon Partners. I wanted to take a few minutes of your time to give a quick introduction to our company, our development program that we're doing across the country, how that development program applies to this site, and then how we have gone through this process to date and see it going forward. Saxon Partners has been around for 20 years, we're just outside of Boston. We've been primarily retail and residential developers in the Northeast. We have copies across the country, but mostly focused on the Northeast. We've done the largest open-air shopping center south of Boston and the largest active adult retirement community in the Boston area. Thousand houses on 1,000 acres with its own treatment plant and swimming pools and clubhouses and things. We've done lakefront lots in Wenchesakee, we've done a wide range of real estate development, mostly in the Northeast. What we're focusing on now in Lewiston, Bitterford, Augusta, Kansas City, down in Florida, South Carolina, is a concept of delivering housing specifically targeted at medical staff. One of the first ones of these we started working on was by Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center. In that area, there's a housing shortage of workforce-type housing. It's not really workforce housing, but housing designed for employees. We met with the Dartmouth Hitchcock officials, their staff is driving long distances to come to work. They work long hours, they drive through snow to get there sometimes. And the meetings with Dartmouth Hitchcock went so well that Dartmouth Hitchcock is actually talking about doing the same type of housing on their property right next to where we're talking about doing housing for them. We found the same thing in other markets across the country. Growing medical centers have a lot of staff that would benefit from housing being close by, and that housing has not been provided. That program is a lot different than some of the subsidized housing you've heard about. We don't go for any government programs, we don't go for any subsidies. We don't do super luxury, we're not trying to set the record for rent. What we're doing is designing very efficient apartments. They have their own kitchens, they have their own laundries. They're all studios in ones. So when you hear of somebody moving to town that wants a studio or one, doesn't have kids and five dogs, we don't want five dogs. This would be the kind of housing that would hopefully appeal to that person. Lewiston, from our perspective, does not have that stock available. If people try to come here, find a job at the hospital, they're either looking far away or they're looking at something that doesn't really match what they want. So, the design is intended to be extremely efficient. We include enough amenities to make it a fun place to be, without going crazy with indoor swimming pools and spas and salons, and it's just, keep it fun, keep it simple, keep it someplace where you're gonna want to work when you come back to Lewiston. These buildings, as designed here, are two buildings along the river, of 105 units each. The one building across the street is frankly not a really efficient building to build. It's not what we would normally do, it just happens to be how the site lays out. We do like to get to 200-plus units, because to operate an apartment building efficiently, to give the kind of housing options and amenities you want to give, you need scale. If you're doing 50, you're gonna have a hard time doing the amenities and the units in a way that's attractive. So this site, as drawn here, we actually may focus on the front two buildings, and the third building, the small building, could be a follow-on, or frankly, it's a question mark. Parking-wise, again, targeting what you mentioned before. We don't want to park for spaces that aren't gonna be used, so we... that aren't going to be used, so we typically design like we have here, at a ratio of sort of one point one per unit. We allow some area for additional parking to be added, in that site plan, you'll see a little bit of land between the building and the stormwater basin, where we can come back and add more parking spaces. So the land's available for it, we'd rather not pave it if it's not needed, we don't think it's going to be needed. We do want our residents to park on-site, we don't want them having to walk down the street, that's part of what we want to offer. The space between the buildings would be programmed for the amenity space, typically we aim for sort of fire pits, barbecues outside, there'd also be indoor sort of yoga studios, small fitness centers, a lot of spaces just to gather and work on your laptop and socialize, but not luxury-luxury. We've talked to the city about various things that the city would like to see, which is on the far right, near the stormwater basin, there's a strip that would be allowed for an easement for a pipe to go across the river, we'd be happy to work with the city on that. We have drawn in a river trail extension. We're mixed emotions on that, if the trail goes through and is functional, we'd love to be part of it, if the trail doesn't go through, for safety and security reasons, we'd rather not have it there, until such time as it does go through, so we have it as a, we're happy to work with the city if and when the trail goes through, prefer not just to have it as a random place for people to go if it doesn't go anywhere. Other little features, there's, it's the old Pineville chimney there, love to keep it, we think it's a neat little feature, we would have to inspect it first, we had a site in Rhode Island that had a chimney that we wanted to keep, and frankly, it was not safe to keep. So if it's keepable, we want to keep it. Stormwater and things, these are rough concept sketches, our process has been in other jurisdictions, as we do the concept sketch, we sit down with the city, we see, is this consistent with your objectives and goals? If it is, we'd love to go forward, if it's not, move on. If, so if this is something that is consistent, and the contract zone is approved, our next step is to spend a lot of money with engineers and make sure all the stormwater is taken care, make sure that there's no flooding issues, make sure the building's fit as we've drawn them, and we'll be back in town with a full special permit process with architectural drawings, full engineering drawings, go through the whole slaughter process. So there's still a long way to go on this, this is, it's a concept plan to see, does it have the support of the city? Okay, so any major points? With us today, we have an engineer, a lawyer, and me.
Were you guys finished?
Yep.
Counsel Marca?
I had a map question. You've got a dotted blue line going through the building. What is that?
Sure. Do you want to find her on the, see her on the map?
So just in terms of zoning, the project is kind of in sort of in a weird position, there are actually three zones. So here's ten Avon Street, and this is thirty-five, thirty-seven. So this zone, the big side of ten Avon, is usually urban enterprise, the small size is R-C, resource conservation, and across the street is-
It's not, because they're televised, we need to-
Sure.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're on stage though, so.
Oh, okay. So I'll just, I'll just start over. So the question was in regards to the blue line going through, so it's a zoning issue?
I, I thought it might have been something to designate water, but it's a property line, right?
Which is a zoning line.
Okay, a zoning line.
Counsel Bean?
I just have a comment, I think if the greenway did happen, that would be advantageous to your project and attract people to it, and you might want to help the city of Lewiston make that happen.
No, we agree, actually, as a road, as a path that goes through is an amenity, as a path to nowhere, it's, it's not an amenity.
Yeah, but to help it go through.
Yeah.
Counsel LaJoie?
Yes, in regards to the extra traffic created by this development, do you, did you do a study with regards as to how they're going to get out of there onto Main Street, which is extremely, extremely busy? I know there's Riverside, Riverside Street, and I've traveled on Main Street, and during the morning hours, especially till about probably eight-thirty, it's extremely busy, and in the evening, of course, it's reversed, and then, of course, you have High Street, and High Street, I, the, the hospital is there and stuff like that, I'm, I'm just wondering about the traffic that's going to be generated, more so than it is currently, and if that has, has that been addressed?
So the short answer on, have we done the traffic study yet, is, is no, we haven't done the traffic, traffic study yet. There would be a traffic study done as part of the permitting process going forward. Well, actually, one thing I didn't mention is we have worked with the city as well on a concept of a TIF program to put money back into the streets around this. The reason we like this site is within a half mile of the hospital. So in most of the areas we're working, there are either pedestrian and/or bicycle and/or shuttle connections to the, of hospital, so that a lot of the employees will be on bikes feet, or shuttles, or carpooling. However, the full traffic study is, is the next step with the permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Ray?
Thank you, so I just want to make sure I'm, or maybe I am misunderstanding this, is this only for medical staff at the hospital?
There would, there'd be nothing at the, there wouldn't be a gate that said, show your card, you can't come in. It's, it would be marketed to them, targeted at them, again, to use Dartmouth as an example, they talked about having a connection with them, where they could advertise when units are coming up for, for availability, so that would be the tie-in, it would not be exclusively limited to them. There's St. Mary's down the street, could be some St. Mary's people, some Bates employees could show up, you know, it's not exclusive, but marketed to.
Okay, and in that case, how was the need for this assessed? Was it through the hospitals and other employers, or is this just something from market research that you assume might-
We just, basically, when you have three thousand-ish employees a half mile away, another couple thousand a mile away, another thousand a mile away, and there's not a whole lot of good housing stock within striking distance, we figure there's probably an opportunity.
Okay, I think, I agree anecdotally, but having some data would help me, just because the scale is a little scary, if, I, I mean, it's great if we have these apartments, but if they're sitting empty, that doesn't sit right with me, so I would personally need to understand a little bit more of that need.
Counsel Lyson?
Okay, I've got a number of things I want to discuss. First is having an engineering background, and being also the planning director here in Lewiston for a while, and also just looking at the changes in our climate system in particular. A hundred-year floodplain is not really what we need to protect ourselves from, I know that's the regulatory context, but I'm concerned about, you know, your investment and the safe well-being of people who live in this building too, and a bit concerned about if we're designing things based upon a hundred-year flood, that, you know, we've seen flooding four hundred, six hundred, I mean, it just, it's, you know, off the scale particularly, and I could see that happening in the Interscan River, quite frankly. So just a concern, knowing that, and I know it's a regulatory context, it's a hundred-year floodplain, but I have concerns about construction, design, and safety, you know, based upon perhaps other types of events. So that's, that's my, my first, first concern. What, you know, going through a conditional or contract zoning, without really seeing what the building's going to look like is a little difficult for me, and I know that's down the road for you guys, I mean, sense of scale and proportion, you talked about, I think there's two hundred and forty units proposed currently, you talked about two hundred being the magic number if you're going to be doing a project like this, maybe there was some flexibility there, I'd like to see some density decrease, I just think there's too many. Next is that I, the height of the building, I mean, I think you guys are going with eighty feet, and I know the topography, and I just wanted to, as a footnote, this is my ward, so I know this location quite well, you know, and I canvass there a lot. I, I've always thought this was one of the most beautiful sites to be developed in the city of Lewiston, frankly, and knowing that, you know, its purpose is a lumberyard at one time, which made a lot of sense when the logs came down the river, but it doesn't need to be on the river, and this should be a place where people can live. A little, I'm glad to hear you say that, you know, this is not just for hospital employees, obviously, there's that market. I, I would like to see more community there, and I sense that if it is all these short-term type people that typically are employed at hospitals, that we might not have that sense of community there that we would like as a community, or at least I would like, and I think my constituents would. The greenway issue, I think it, as most things, cuts both ways, I think there was concerns about crime, but when you have people on, on pathways like that, that's what's going to solve crime, and, and I agree with you, it, you know, and I agree with Counsel Bean, I think there's things you can do to help support that down the road, but again, we don't want a, a trail going nowhere, and I know there's some, some obstacles as we head north, I happen to live on the river on the way north side, and I remember when I was the planning director, we had put up some maps about what, you know, the future, you know, on greenways, or walkways, whatever, and we said, well, we should follow every river, you know, from the city all the way to the town line, you know what I mean, and build trails or whatever. We had property owners coming out of the woodwork saying, you drew a line on my property here. So I understand, you know, there's, you know, until we get, you know, and that's a good way of commuting too, I mean, if you can believe it, some people drove bikes a long time ago, and when there weren't any, but now we have, have different parts of that system that's, that's done, but this would be great to tie that in when, when that time comes, and I appreciate that. The water line's another big positive, I think, we need that redundancy, we need that, and this will give us a location to do that. Lord knows where we're going to get the money for that right away, but I think it's, it's, it's something that needs to be done. Other concerns, I think, I, I, and again, I think a project like this is some, is so different in people's minds, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it a little bit, but I know that when we talk about how many cars we need to park, or how are people going to get to the hospital, it, it reminds me that if you don't build like bike racks or whatever here, and I'm sure, I know Bates has them, St. Mary's has some, I'm sure CMMC has them, but how do you promote that other means of transportation, which would take some of the pressure off of people having to drive, you know, more traffic and whatever? I think there's ways of doing that, and just returned from a trip down south, which included Washington DC, and I can't believe the amount of people who are on motorized scooters, motorized bicycles, bicycles, and it seemed like everything else was either an Uber or a taxi, a regular taxi. I mean, there are very few cars in Washington DC, because if people have other modes of transportation, they have a good, other system, you know, a public transportation system as well, but people, there's other means of people, and these motorized scooters were going up pretty good grades too, so I know it's a pretty good grade up there. Another component that I think that is, is kind of missing in the equation is, this is very close to also the former train station, which could provide an opportunity, be it for medical tourism or whatever, but bring people very, very close to this area as well. And the talk about the re-establishment of passenger rail to this area, and the likelihood that this train station could be reopened, and that's a very short distance from this project, so, and this neighborhood, I think that's part of, of a bigger, wider picture that could also say, hey, we can even get people here, not driving their cars, but coming in on the train, and then perhaps, you know, communicate, having a shovel or some other way to get over to this complex if they're going to, looking for housing, or maybe there's some set aside for people who are not staff, but maybe patients, who will have a, say, operation scheduled at the cancer center or whatever, and need a place to stay. And that's getting to be more and more popular, I'm sure market studies talk about that as well, and we've had some projects proposed in these two communities as well. So I think I'm getting close to ending, and again, the, there was concerns expressed at the, at the planning board that these will go into, you know, subsidized housing or whatever. In some ways, I think mixed income's fine, but I think, do think that there's also opportunities for, you know, other projects, like, perhaps like yours, who, you know, and as we move through this process, I'd, I'd like to have some of the questions answered before I go there, but again, look at density, I'm pleased to hear about some of the improvements about roadway, because Bridge Street's in bad shape, Avon's not great, has no sidewalks, you know, so I think the neighbors will, could appreciate some of the amenities that would, could be part of this project as well. And again, change is always difficult, but again, here's a use that was, that, you know, really has not, has served its purpose and its time, but it's ready for people to enjoy that river view, and, and not just logs and lumber. And so I think, again, I pointed out, a lot of good aspects of this project, a little concern about density, want to see the traffic study, obviously, there's, there may be some, some direction from that to see where we can go and, and serve this neighborhood a little bit better. And again, it's, you know, we're talking about a relatively low-income community, it's kind of mixed use, and it, it's, it's probably not unlike any other place in Lewiston if you drive the neighborhood. I mean, you have nice houses, but you also have some low-income housing, you've got some businesses and industries even in some of the locations, and obviously, then you've got institutional uses like the hospital, and the railroad tracks, the railroad goes by. So it's, I think, a unique piece of property, it's a unique opportunity for the city, and, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that I'll begin to love it even more as we go through the project, but obviously, I have some concerns.
Counsel Patton?
So I, I sit here, and we just had a presentation from the Avesta people that was overwhelmingly supported. I sit here and I listen to a project that focuses on another type of citizen that we have here in the city, and I hear comments that lean toward not supporting the project. I'm sure in all your data, you're in large markets, medical, the medical field is one of the largest growing industries in the United States, so there's no impetus for, for slowing down at all. With the population continuing to age in the way that it is, they need more medical support the older that they get, which then falls onto the hospitals. As we heard earlier, a large portion of Lewiston is non-taxable due to nonprofits. We have two very large hospitals that like to expand, because they have the need for that. So given the national trend, and the fact that we have two very large hospitals that do a good job of what they do, there's probably data that supports that they're going to expand at some time in the future, so that's going to bring more jobs. One of the things that was talked about with the Avesta project is jobs, jobs that don't exist yet. These jobs do. So when we talk about supporting jobs, let's support jobs, you know, that are here, this project will in turn create more jobs to create this project. And I apologize for, for being a little bit all over the board here, you know, as I talked about with the previous thing, density is something that is not understood, it's a very scary word to most people. Again, here, we're looking to increase density, which is a good thing, it allows us to bring more people into a city with, with a small footprint in the grand scheme of things, so if we- So if we can't get more people into the city, we're not going to do anything to address the people that move out and don't come back. So density is a great way to address this. The fact that it's on waterfront, which Lewiston doesn't have much of, it's a great way to bring people to the city. And what could be a great project, there's no engineering design, so we can't speak to that. I would like to see those, but it's very early in the process. The comment about if a traffic study was done, that's all based on the amount of trips that may be generated. I don't remember the threshold of it. A project this size seems that it would do that. To talk about the parking, I'm a strong advocate for parking behind the buildings. It doesn't work here due to the water, and I think that would be an inappropriate use of the land. Again, I'll always advocate for less parking. There's two large companies, one which you named, that operate in larger cities, Uber and Lyft, whose public missions are to end private car ownership and promote ride-sharing. With all trends, that will end up in Lewiston at some point, so it's smart to be proactive and not build large plots of land that are dedicated just to parking, which is a very expensive endeavor, which also ties to making housing unaffordable when we promote. It's cheaper to build parking than it is to build housing for people. And then, Councilor Lyson, you made a comment about the secondary water line for our drinking water that we needed, and sort of joked about how we would get that money. It's by investing in our city and promoting real estate and adding jobs and turning an old timber plant that hasn't seen any activity on it in years and redeveloping that, which is infill development. And then lastly, to the comment that was addressed about increased crime at an abandoned factory warehouse site that will have increased crime due to people living there, I cannot see how that would happen. And as you said, putting people in areas that are lit and that are utilized by people are natural crime deterrents. I agree, the walkway would be a great benefit if it goes through. That's something we're going to have to see where it goes. But I applaud you guys for taking on this project, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the council? To the public.
Hi, thank you. My name is Barbara Alberta, and I live across from this project at 53 West Bates Street. Thank you, Jim, for comments you made about constituents. We are concerned. So I've come today to voice my concerns and my interests. I've been waiting for a very long time to find out what was going to happen to Pineland. I remember the day it went out of business. I remember gardening in my garden and watching all the guys come and go from the plant and the big trucks that would go down the street, and my road would shake, and I've got lots of cracks in my horsehair plaster in my home. Those cracks really have stopped since Pineland closed, and I'm really kind of happy about So I've always joked that after Pineland closed, somebody would come along and buy my little piece of property and put up a parking lot. I'm not in the grid over there, and I'm not in the drawing, kind of disappointed, almost though. So I mentioned that I live right across the street. I live on the corner of West Bates and Avon. And I can really see the benefit to the city. I can see the benefit to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood, I've lived there for 15 years this year, and our neighborhood has really, really gone downhill. It's yucky now. And, you know, my house went downhill for a long time until I could afford to put new siding on it and get a home equity line of credit and that sort of thing. So yes, there is poverty in the neighborhood. There's also those of us that are able to make good with our properties, and my house looks pretty good right now. I wish the horsehair plaster could be fixed, but I can't quite afford that yet. I do have concerns. I'm concerned about the contract zone. The question was asked earlier about, you know, what happens if this project doesn't work? And that means that the zone goes with the property. I was glad to hear tonight, not, we didn't hear this last week, but I was glad to hear tonight, that there is a way to revert back to the old zoning if this project does not work out. Still a little scared about how that's going to work, but, not this project, not that this wouldn't work, but if we had to revert, that would concern me. The scale is scary. I know one of you mentioned that. I do have a significant concern that if this project fails, that I will end up with low-income, lower income than what we already have there. And that's really a concern for me. I want to make sure that we talk about West Bates Street.
So I just want to let you know you have one minute, sorry.
Thank you. I really want to make sure we talk about West Bates Street because the streets that I hear mentioned in the project are Holland and Avon. And being right center in that neighborhood, I know that most people walk or go from the hospital up West Bates to where the light is at the end of Middle Street. We don't go down Holland as often because there's no light there at the end of Holland, and our, the traffic from those two buildings would most likely go around the West Bates side, not the long way around up Holland. So I'm very concerned that West Bates is not being mentioned in the proposal, and I would really like to see that be changed. I'm worried about the sidewalk conditions. All of this will flush out with some of the more, the more we go further. And I want to mention about the crime. The crime in the last meeting was not so much about what happens at Pineland, although there has been crime at Pineland, and we've called the police a number of times.
So you can wrap it up, sorry.
Hi, my name is Linda Scott. I live at 45 Patengill Street, and this is also in my ward. A couple of things that I would like you to consider, not only the professionals from the hospital that may stay here, but I'm going to give an example of my mom, who is a retired professional. She was the second female stockbroker in the state of Maine and no longer wants to hone home. She wants a nice little apartment. Well, that was a difficult task when she sold her house and we had to find her a place to live, a small place to live. And we found something. It was very nice. It's on Jefferson Street. She would prefer to be closer to me, and I think that this would be something that would be perfect for somebody in that age range, who is a professional, who is retired, who is staying in Lewiston, and who is looking for a nice little apartment in a nice area, and this is considered a nice neighborhood. I walk this neighborhood all the time. I cross Main Street, I go down to the Riverwalk, and I walk this all the time. The thought that this could be extended for a Riverwalk and what this could bring to the community in that particular neighborhood, I think, is actually an advantage. Concerns, though. I walk this area all the time. Crossing Main Street and the traffic in that area is horrendous. And I would have to agree that if you're not looking at West Bates Street as far as part of the traffic situation, you're going to have to put that into perspective. Because when you're leaving that area and you're trying to get out or make a left-hand turn onto Main Street, it's almost impossible at certain aspects of the day. So I think that you're going to need to consider that. But I also think that, you know, we did just have a conversation about another housing project downtown that was different than this. And this is something that we need in our community as well. We need to be able to attract young professionals as well as retired professionals and have a nice, safe, beautiful place to live in a nice area. And on the river with that view, it's going to be considered a nice area.
You have one minute, sorry.
And it's going to bring, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Shanna Cox, 119 Ash Street. I think it's important to talk about housing of all types. I'm a little disappointed, though not surprised, that this conversation for both of these projects have been about the type of people who will be living in the home. While that's disheartening, I would like to focus on the positive aspects of this, where we're investing in high density in an area that has existing infrastructure. That's a large waterfront piece of property that if was not zoned in a high density, so if this zoning was not approved, which is what I believe we're listening to and making a decision on today, there's a lot more to come, I think, as you've already noticed from a process point. If that was to remain industrial, that's a waste of good waterfront. That's a waste of a good opportunity for a lot of people, regardless of how we want to label them, to live there. And so I think if we're really talking about what the issue is today, which is the contract zone, the opportunity to make that choice, make that future kind of visionary investment, and then get the details about the style and the design, I have concerns as well. But I don't think that it would make sense to invest if I was these folks. I wouldn't invest in those engineering studies and in those renderings to come back here if I didn't even know if you were willing to make the change to the zone. So I think if we're paying attention to process and what today is about, this is a good choice for our council. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Goodus. I live at 6 Raymond Avenue in Lewiston. I'm also chairman of the planning board. We've had this project presented to us in two phases. One was an exploratory phase. The second one was a presentation that was done Monday night. The idea of this project, it's on a prime piece of real estate. You're talking a $35 million investment in the city. There's going to be proposed 245 units. Half of them will be studio apartments with approximately 525 square feet. The one-bedrooms will be approximately 720 square feet. When the developer gave us their rendition on Monday, last Monday night, they explained they intend on having onsite management, onsite security. I personally, after the meeting, went and looked at some of their property development that they have done. They seem to take great pride in the design of their buildings. They take great pride, again, looking online and looking at the buildings, in the care and the landscaping, how it looks from the outside. And I'm sure that when you're investing $35 million, that they're going to take care of the inside as well. And I think the fact that they're willing to work with the city in regards to putting the second water line easement through, if we lose the one we have now, the city of Lewiston's in real trouble. We need that second line. The fact that they were willing to listen to the planning board in regards to the need for an easement or something for the greenway to extend shows me that they're willing to work with the city. If you heard what they said earlier, they not only do residential, they also do retail and other investment. Maybe they see that they can do this development in Lewiston, they may come back with some sort of economic development for this area. So it's really worthwhile to take a look at what this company stands for and what they can do for our city.
Thanks, Pauline.
Hi, my name is Sophia Khalid. I'm 518 Main Street in Lewiston. So this project, I'm not very knowledgeable about it, but it offers a lot of benefits. But there is one major flag for me personally, and that's, that's marketing to medical staff only. We shouldn't have that. I think that we need to have guidelines and policies that are inclusive to the wider residents of Lewiston. Therefore, this concept plan should only, should not only be marketed to medical staff who just come to work and then leave to Portland, to other places, but don't invest in Lewiston, don't call Lewiston their home, don't come to Lewiston for other activities except to work and leave, and don't claim Lewiston as their home. So I think that this should only be, this should be marketed to medical staff as well as to the wider community of Lewiston, because they're going to stay longer, they're going to invest in Lewiston longer, so let's make it more inclusive, then hopefully then the committee will be on board with the plan after they make it inclusive. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Grooby. I live at 74 Brooks Avenue, and I own properties on Cottage Street, which would be affected by the project. I do give the developers a lot of credit because it is an act of faith to invest in Lewiston $35 million. And last, at the meeting on Monday, I had heard that it was $75,000 in tax dollars. It was actually $775,000 in taxes. So from that standpoint, I feel that I could probably be somewhat supportive of it. But one of the issues that I was concerned with was the idea of changing the zoning from the comp plan, the CV zone. How far away is it right now? And does this mean that next time somebody has a project that they want to put on Outer Main Street, that we're going to somehow magically use the CV zone to bring it up there? Perhaps there should be some other term for it, because when I hear CV, I think of Lisbon Street, and I think of the properties that are developed downtown. Avon Street is not downtown. It's part of a residential neighborhood of mixed-use. There's some older commercial properties, and there's a lot of older housing. There are very few houses in there that are probably less than 20 years old. But given all that, I probably would be on the fence as far as doing the change, but I would probably applaud the developers for what they're doing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back to the council. Councilor Lyson?
Yes, thank you. A lot of zoning things been tossed out with both of these projects that are occurring, but, and obviously, Centreville is not the greatest name for, you know, for this area. But I think what we're trying to do is utilize the zoning that is a little bit behind the comprehensive plan, you know, that, you know, so I don't think we need to kind of visualize everything fixed the way the zoning maps were created back in 1988 and changed a little bit. But I think what we're trying to do is take a zone in both cases that allows the kind of density that Zach has talked about, it's necessary of developing these areas where there is infrastructure or, you know, great scenic opportunities or where people want to live. And I agree. And I, hopefully, my reservations is not something that I'm, what I want to see is the best project that this can be and address the concerns of the neighbors, which, you know, there's always, you know, it cuts both ways. The investment is certainly something that's really necessary in the community. But again, on the zoning, and I, you know, I may be the self-proclaimed expert in zoning, but I'm a professional planner, at least I'm retired now, but I think that the concern about whatever zone we're going, we're taking here is a zone that exists in the city, and that's really what we're doing. We're taking someone, a zone that allows some flexibility with density, because we want density in certain areas. And this is an area where I think we can handle, you know, some density and especially the type of project that you're proposing. Obviously, I totally agree with the West Bates Street issue, and that also leads over to the train station, too, eventually. So I think it's something you guys should look at. And again, I think the traffic study will, but I think in Bates Streets, I don't think it's recovered from Pineland lumber deliveries either. So it does need some improvement as well. So again, again, I just wanted to try to eliminate the fact that we don't really, because it's Centreville, it's just that was named Centreville because that's the French name for downtown. And basically, we could use some changes in the zoning, I think David and Link would both agree, and to make it look like, you know, that the city is understanding of, and this area obviously has changed considerably, you know, since the lumberyard has closed. So it's, there's probably not a perfect zone that you can talk about, but again, I don't, I have a little bit concerned about the high density, but I know this is, this will be a high-density area because of the type of project and the... this will be a high-density area because of the type of project and the amenities and other things. But again, how do you fit it into the neighborhood? And making the traffic reasonable and trying to promote other modes of transportation, I think, will be critical for the neighborhood. And, you know, I'd like to see that greenway go through, and that's another way to get downtown as well.
So I'm going to keep it brief. Definitely want to see a traffic study. I think that that's important. And I think, you know, being as inclusive you can in the marketing that you're doing to not just, you know, keep it focused on hospital employees, but I think, you know, in terms of attracting millennials and younger folks to the area, I think that, you know, doing that kind of outreach is also important. So.
Call the roll.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number?
7.
7.
Item number 7, Budget Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget. Requested action to conduct the first budget public hearing to receive citizen input and communication regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 municipal budget.
So we don't need a motion?
Correct. It's just an opportunity to open the floor for citizens to comment.
Does anyone have comments on the budget from the public? Public comments closed.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing. The next item is number 9. Resolve receiving the final report of the Ad hoc Advisory Committee on Rental Registration. Requested action to approve the resolve receiving the final report of the Ad hoc Advisory Committee on Rental Registration.
So, second.
I have a motion by Councilor LeJoy, seconded by Councilor Lyson.
Mark.
Oh, sorry. I have a motion by Councilor Mark.
I thought you beat me, but.
Seconded by Councilor Lyson. Right? Discussion on the council, oh, can we get a brief overview?
Well, very brief. Obviously, the committee has worked, was originally established back in September, I think it was, and has worked since then to try to first address the basic question that was asked of them, which is, should we have a rental registration program? One of the early things that the committee did was recommend it against the program that was presented by the code enforcement department back in, I think, May of last year. They did that fairly early in the process, spent a lot of time after that looking at other recommendations that they could make to improve the housing stock. And then toward the end of the process, they came back to look at rental registration and an option to it, and maybe a different approach to it. But basically, let me run through real quickly. Some of the major recommendations are to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the fire prevention code enforcement departments, with fire prevention being the primary proactive inspection group, and code primarily responding to problems, complaints, and focused enforcement in high-risk areas of the community. Recommendations have been made to provide city staff with improved technology, both in terms of some software for the fire department that would provide them with better data in terms of their inspection program, providing handheld systems for some of our inspectors so that they can complete their work in the field, not have to come back to the office and spend time trying to catch up with their field work. Right now, they're taking notes in the field, coming back, entering it into the computer system. Sometimes that takes a couple of days, depending on how busy they are. Adopting a goal to inspect all three-unit and larger properties within a three-to-five-year period. Establishing a general assistance housing inspection and tenant education program. It's nice to report that even before you do anything with this report, I can say that we've implemented both of those. We are now doing housing inspections tied to our general assistance vouchers, and we have begun holding tenant education classes for our general assistance clients. Continuing with dangerous building enforcement and demolitions. Implementing a lead-safe online registry that would not only capture the properties that the city is aware of, that have either been lead-free or made lead-free or lead-safe, but allow private landlords to enter their data in there if they have a property that has been dealt with, so that that information is available to the public. Providing an upgraded code enforcement system or some upgraded computer system that would allow the public to inquire on properties, to get a little bit of history about their code situation, violations, permits, things like that, so that that would be available to the public. That might be either through the intergov system we currently have, or in some ways, preferably through the city's GIS system, where you could inquire on a property and get all of the information about that property that the city has in an automated form. Educating and providing resources for owners and renters so that they can be successful. That would include things like providing building owners with a simplified code enforcement checklist that would identify those issues that we most frequently run into in multifamily units. Trying to provide an incentive, we've already covered that. Working with healthy Andrews Coggin and outreach efforts to improve knowledge about how to live safely in a building that has lead present in it. As we all know, and as we talked about earlier tonight, it is going to take a long time to deal with the lead problem in Lewiston, and in the meantime, people are going to have to live in properties that have some level of lead in them. There are ways to do that safely, but it does take some education and training for people to do that. Looking at whether we can find, whether we can justify to the state increasing the rental payments that we make through our general assistance program, which many of the landlords feel are inadequate, to allow them to adequately maintain and improve their properties. Changing our disorderly property standard operating procedure. Right now, the police department will contact, excuse me, contact a landlord when we have received five calls of a certain type in a month involving a unit in a building, so one apartment in a building. You have five calls from four different apartments. It doesn't hit the standard we need to make contact. We're suggesting going with the five calls per building, or the five incidents per building rather than by unit. That will allow us to deal with some of the difficulties we have in even identifying which unit of call is related to. You know, if you have people in a hallway making noise, or people in a backyard, or an incident on the front porch, it's sometimes hard to tie those to a specific unit, but you can tie them to a building and to an address. Continuing to aggressively seek federal, state, and private funding to improve housing stock. And then the recommendation on registration is that it would be a no-cost system where landlords would be asked to register so that we had up-to-date, accurate contact information for the landlord, a 24-hour response number to get somebody if we need to get a hold of them, maybe fire or code would need them. Information on who the property manager is, if it's under a property management company. And then we have, the committee did not specifically detail all of the information that would be asked for in that registration process. That's something we still need to do. But that might also be a mechanism for a landlord or an owner to indicate, hey, this property has already addressed the lead issue and is lead-safe, or this property is lead-free, or things like that might be collected as well. The only financial issue there is funding the staff that would be related to that. There are some recommendations for additional staff, recommendation for an additional fire inspector. We will probably need a clerical position to deal with the registration process. And there would be a penalty for failure to register. That's kind of a quick summary. We'll be back to it right after budget in more detail.
Thank you.
So I just want to say that as somebody who's worked with organizations around sort of lead poisoning prevention for a long time, this is an idea that has been kicked around for probably 20 years, and I am so pleased to just have something before us that we can get on the books and just have that extra layer of safety for residents living downtown. I also am looking forward to the creation of a housing committee, because I think that a permanent housing committee, not just an ad hoc one, with representation from people across the city. I think that, you know, we've tended to focus, you know, either on people who live on the outskirts or people who live downtown, and I think having a more comprehensive housing committee where everybody's sort of working together and presenting their ideas together is really important. So I also really, really, really want to thank the rental registration subcommittee itself, because I think that it was a lot of hard work and a lot of coming together and a lot of really working together to finally create something that was going to be, that we were going to be able to implement.
And I should also mention that and thank the councilors sitting at opposite ends on the podium, who both served on the committee, Councilor Lyson and Councilor Mark.
And I hope that we can get these recommendations on the agenda for after budget season.
I'm hoping as soon as the budget's done sometime in May.
Great, thanks. Councilor Lyson?
Yeah, just wanted to make a point. I think it was, we heard some testimony earlier today about wanting to be inclusive, and one of my major concerns was that there weren't any tenants on this rental registration. And hopefully in the housing, as we move forward, we can get some representation of tenants, because I think that's critically important. I wanted to thank Councilor Mark for his work as well on this committee, and I figure anything that came back both of us has got to be pretty good, right? So, and again, David also, David did a wonderful job kind of being in charge of the circus that it was sometimes. But anyway, sometimes you form a committee and you want to design a horse and you get a giraffe or something, you know, I mean. But I think here, you know, I think a lot of the landlords were concerned about fees, and as long as it didn't involve money, and we tried to really do what we could not to make it, you know, in encumbrance on landlords, and it's tough in this market anyway. But I do think we need the information to go forward. And, you know, if we're not protecting the health, welfare, and safety of our community, then we're not doing our job. And this is, housing is obviously one of the biggest parts of that. So, and our rental properties downtown are, you know, serve so many many people, many of them low-income, and their voice needs to be heard as well. So, thank you.
For Madam?
Good thing there's no recordings of what I told the then mayor after my first meeting. It was a rugged process, especially the first meeting. And it was nice that at the final conclusion, we could vote unanimously on the final product. So it's testimony that we're all able to work together. As far as the housing committee, one of my ideas, if it's going to be a standing committee, should probably have a representative from each ward.
Yep.
Whether that be a tenant or a property owner. And it should be people who live in the community particularly. One of the things I heard outside of the meetings, and I think it made for a great idea, is for the current landlords in town who are struggling in substandard housing, we could create a TIF district and help them improve their properties. Some of these ideas could be a whole lot less costly than the $200,000 unit that we're seeing in some of these major projects. And I'm sure that these landlords would be more than willing to match those TIFs. If their property taxes were cut in half, and whatever that value is, they reinvest back into the property. So.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Councilor?
So in looking at this report, I appreciate that it comes to us with unanimous. I think we'll likely take up specific issues on line by line, and so I look forward to commenting on those. One thing I had a question about, or maybe a statement, I'm not sure yet, was last week we heard about how some of the HUD funding for lead rehabilitation might not be coming back to Lewiston. We can't use certain funding as a revolving loan fund. Could maybe Mr. Jeffers speak on how we can be helping landlords who might need that sort of rehabilitation and have been working in concert with the city? And do we have a plan moving forward to help them?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, but let me take a shot at it. We do have a $3.4 million lead grant, and we are about halfway through it. We're a little less, about a year, a little more than a year into it.
I think you might be talking about CDPG funding.
Yes, through HUD.
So the CDPG funding that goes towards loans to landlords? We did have two loan programs.
We have very limited funds available currently for lending.
Right, and they changed the way you can use the funding, so it's no longer able to use as a revolving loan fund?
Or it's very challenging to keep it in there. Yes, exactly. And it's simply that we had a relatively large balance available that we burned through when they said you need to spend it, because we had more than one and a half times our allocation on hand two months before the end of the year. So we went through a lot of money. At this point, we're adding about $10,000 a month back into it, so we're trying to build the amount back up. And I think maybe the point you were talking about, until we have it down to zero or very close to zero, we can't take CDPG funds to recapitalize. So, and to Councilor Mark's issue, I'll have to give some thought to how you would structure a TIF, because generally, TIFs kick off revenues from new investments. It's not that you're just allowed to cut somebody's taxes in half. So we've got to figure out, it piques my curiosity. I'm not quite sure how you would structure.
How TIFs are done in Maine has a certain structure that we've all become accustomed to, but there's a wide variety. I picked up a free book a few years back, read it from cover to cover. Boy, was it dry. But there were a lot of different mechanisms. You could take a, they didn't specifically say zoning, but it was a particular geographical part of a larger community across the country. A lot of the examples were Chicago, Midwest. And my idea would be downtown residential, because that's where most of the issues lie.
Right, and we, yeah, I've given some thoughts to programs like that. The basic premise of a tax increment financing district is that you capture the incremental taxes, taxes that come from additional development, or it could even be redevelopment if that redevelopment results in a higher value. The difficulty we continuously face downtown, and obviously, we can talk to Bill Healy about this, our assessor, is that reinvestment in properties downtown, particularly some of the older properties, don't necessarily do much for the value of the property, which is based on the market. So until you can see some movement there, it's hard to capture it. I've tried to figure out if there's another way to provide a financial incentive, and we can give that some more thought, but it gets a little bit tricky, because you can potentially run into the state constitution, which basically says you have to treat everybody equally. So I can't, you know, give Councilor LeJoy 25% of his taxes back because he's painting the outside of his house and not give it to Councilor Lyson if he does the same thing. I mean, there are those kinds of technical issues with it, and I don't know if there are other, we'll do some hunting around, see if there's anything we can find that might work.
I was looking more towards the light issue, structural issues. If you're improving a property structurally, I'm sure that you're improving the value and the longevity of that.
Yeah, that's normally the equation that you would think, but that's not necessarily the equation that we have, in that until we see the whole neighborhood start to improve, we're not going to see the values go up dramatically. We're starting to see some improvement, because we've gotten rid of a lot of vacancy, that problem that we had, we've gotten rid of some of the worst stuff. But I'd have to sit down with Bill some more and see what he's actually seeing in terms of sale prices.
Can I finish? So all that to say, and sorry about the brain hiccup on CDPG funding being part of this, but I think knowing that that calculation changes over time, or what we're able to offer to folks who are trying to improve their housing stock, the housing stock particularly, their own as landlords, just, I want to keep that in mind personally, because it's all related, it seems like, and we're doing a great job with the program with the $3.4 million. But just keeping in mind how the other funding sources factor into that, that's all.
Anyone else in the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 10.
Agenda number 10. Order authorizing the city administrator to execute a First Amendment to parking lease agreement and an amended and restated memorandum of parking lease agreement harmonizing the term of the Hartley Block parking lease agreement to the term of the main housing financing on the property.
So moved.
Yeah, hold on a second. Go ahead, Kathy.
That's okay. So the requested action is to approve the lease, is to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute a First Amendment on parking lease agreement and an amended and restated memorandum of parking lease agreement harmonizing the term of the Hartley Block parking lease agreement to the term of the main housing financing on the property.
I'll move that again, then.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Can we get a overview from?
Well, I was going to say, we have Amy Cullen, who's with the Zantin Project. She was the one who came to me when we first did this project. We've got 30 years of guaranteed rentals for 63 units in the Hartley Block. As they went through their financing, Main Housing said, it's great that you've got 30 years, but we want it tied to our financing. So they have not yet closed on their permanent loan financing, and so that's simply what this request is for. It was originally tied to the certificate of occupancy for the building, which was issued on March 15th. I'm also happy to say out of 63 units, is it still 40 units that have already been leased?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Twenty-five to ten.
Okay, 25, so anyway, the project's going quite well. They're in, but this is really just a sort of cleaning up a little bit at the tail end, where one of the funders is asking for an extension. So we're asking that the parking agreements be extended to August 1st, 2049, which is about three months longer than they currently are.
Great. Councilor Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of items. In the memo from Lincoln to the mayor and members of council, the reference to market rates, does that mean that as the price of renting parking spaces go up over the 30 years, that they would gradually go up as well? Yes. Okay. Availability at that parking garage currently? That one, it's close to capacity. Depends on who you talk to. I've heard that it's been past capacity. I don't think that's the case, especially during the summer months. We've got to really step it up and start plowing the top decks. When top decks are not plowed, it is close. One issue with the Hartley Block, though, is many of the residents, I don't think everybody's going to walk to work. So if they're working anywhere else, they need to drive to work, they're not going to be there during the day when other people are away. So I'm not sure exactly what the percentage of residents who are there, you know, 24 hours, seven days a week. But I think it complements, allows us to actually oversell the parking garage and get more revenues. So the top deck's currently not being used in the winter? They're just starting to. They did start plowing it this year, and that relieved the tension that was there, because we do hear of occasion. Because one of the two garages in that area did get a new top deck. I don't know if it was Sontreville or Chestnut. I think it was Chestnut a couple of years ago, Sontreville. During my tenure with the city, I remember, Heather's still here. You've got, yeah, you've got, about 10 years ago, I remember they redid the Sontreville garage. I think it's got existing, I think Chestnut Street is the more recent. More recent. Yeah. And in the next paragraph, there's a reference to Maine State Housing is requiring that parking agreement be coterminous with the loan, but it falls a few months shy. Right now, the way the original agreement was drafted is that the 30-year clock would start ticking when they got their certificate of occupancy, which happened on March 15th of this year. So they're already using it, taking advantage of it. Main Housing said, look, that's great, but that's going to expire before we're done with our loan due. We want it to expire when our loan expires. We're thinking they're going to close in May, and they go by, you've got how many lenders? Three or four different lenders involved? Just so we don't come back and do the same thing in May, let's, we thought, let's have a little extra room here. So right now, it starts in March. We're asking that it be extended March, April, five more months. So it will be coterminous? Yes. Oh, okay.
Anyone else? Councilor Patton.
Couple of questions, a little bit of devil's advocate. What happens if we don't make the loan coterminous?
We're not making, if we don't make the lease coterminous with Main Housing?
Yeah, to match this. Because my question and the paradox that I see us in, 10 years in, we're, you know, on the cusp of finally starting to address our parking issues and have the preferred parking be in the garages. That garage is very difficult 15 years ago when I used it. I can only imagine how it is now. But we're going to see an increase of people moving to park in the garages versus parking on the streets. At the same time, there's a very real possibility of seeing car ownership drop. So my concern is how easy is this to amend in the future when we have data available to us that the deal doesn't work out? They may not need as much parking as is designed by this because of, you know, the rise of millennials that don't want to own cars. Sounds like a bad sci-fi movie.
If I could clarify just on that point, it does not require them to lease 63 spaces? They can tell us on a monthly basis how many they need, so if only half of their tenants want spaces.
On that, that was the other half of my question of, you know, what causes a change to this, and how fast are we able to react to that? Because, you know, as we all know, parking's difficult. Nobody wants to tackle it because it is such a hot-button issue. And if we let it drag on, it creates very real problems. I've been in support of this project since it first came, you know, to the planning board. This type of infill greatly enhances all the economics that are happening on Lisbon Street right now, and I don't want to see something as convoluted and simple as parking. Throw a wrench in that in 10 years simply because the city can't react fast enough to it. But if it sounds like it's something that's incredibly easy to amend, that was just my question of.
As long as, as long as they have a guaranteed ability to park the 30 spaces if they need it to meet the requirements of their lender. My comment is, what you are exactly addressing is the problem that the city has. All of those issues can be addressed if you have a parking management system in place. I could fix an over-demand in Sontreville tomorrow if I charge $50, if I take that $50 charge in Sontreville and make it 75, and take the $50 charge in Oak Street and make it 40. That would move a lot of people who are in Sontreville, who could easily, by adding 100 yards, be over here in Oak Street.
Yeah, it's simple supply and demand, but because nobody wants to tackle parking.
That's why we need a parking management firm.
We're too slow, and I, yeah, I mean, you're not, you're not wrong with it. It's just placing an importance on it. So, thank you.
Yeah, there are things that can be done to try to manage parking demand.
Yeah, and that, really, the agreement is very flexible. It is on a monthly basis. If they say, look, everybody, everybody left, you know, we don't, we only need 10 spaces, we can adapt that quickly. I think it tends to be pretty steady, because they have very steady tendency in their buildings, but we can be that flexible. It's really the lender who's asking for it.
Any further discussion in the council? Did we go to the public yet? I don't, to the public?
That's the chief.
Back to the council. Call the roll.
Council from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 11.
Reports and updates.
So I just wanted to briefly mention, since we talked about the housing committee, that I've spoken with the city administrator, and in terms of making appointments to committees going forward, I'll sort of make the appointments, but it'll come to the council for approval before being implemented. So there's an extra layer sort of accountability there. Yes, Councilor Ray.
Just a quick school committee update. I know it's getting very late. On March 27th, we had a very illustrious workshop on Title I funding and how that works for the school system. I'd encourage you to watch the tape and then reach out to either myself, Superintendent Bill Webster, or Chief Academic Officer Sean Chabot. And then also, we had a budget workshop in which we added $388,000 to our list in the budget. So that will be further reviewed tomorrow night in a workshop at 6:00 PM at the Dingley Building. Thanks.
And were those additions, was it like, you know, 30 different things, or was it pretty?
It was quite a number of things, ranging from transportation for students who will be attending the new Connor School, who previously attended Longley, which did not have transportation, to the three-quarter time SRO for the Connor School, to all sorts of other things. But those, I think, will be reviewed again tomorrow night.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number 12.
Any other city business councils or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government?
Seeing none, do I have a motion from the council board?
You do. To move to executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the International Association of Firefighters, Local 785.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. All those in favor?
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.